Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in our decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, song, dance, law and dreaming stories for many thousands of years. We pay respect to our elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness, and in caring for one another and this country. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. councillor Hutton, any apologies?
Yes Chair. Chair, I'd like to advise that councillor Jenkinson will be absent today and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from this meeting.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Mackay that councillor Jenkinson be granted leave of absence for today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. I wish to advise that councillors Griffiths and Strunk will be away for today's meeting and move that they be granted a leave of absence.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier that councillors Griffiths and Strunk be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes please.
Mister Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,721st meeting held on Tuesday the 5th of September 2023 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Mackay that the minutes of the 4,721st meeting of council held on the 5th of September 2023 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. There's going to be a tongue twister in there one day. I would like to call on miss Louise Bazina and miss Claire Walters who will address the chamber on Brisbane's festival closing event known as 10,000 Kazoo's. Miss Bazina, you have five minutes from when the timer starts. Obviously seated, enjoy.
Thank you. On behalf of the Chair of Brisbane Festival, Anna Reynolds, and the CEO of Brisbane Festival, Charlie Cush, I would like to thank Mister Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors for having us here today and your amazing support of Brisbane Festival. Thanks to you all. Brisbane is currently buzzing and it's a very exciting time to be here. We opened on the 1st of September with a spectacle, Brisbane's very first major drone show, telling the story of Niaju, the spirit of the whale. River Fire by Australian Retirement Trust was the biggest to date. Our serenades continue to delight audiences with free concerts across the city. Lightscape in the city botanic gardens made its Brisbane debut and we have already sold 83,000 tickets, which we're thrilled about as we still have three weeks of dazzling lights to show our city. Banana Land, our brand new musical, is about to launch and we hope that will have a long life. However, we close our festival sadly on next Saturday, the 23rd of September, with the ultimate celebration of community and participation with a concert called All Together Now. The festivities will kick off with 10,000 kazoo's, 10,000 biodegradable kazoo's, taking place at the glorious Victoria Park. This free community event will bring us together to say goodbye to Brisbane Festival for 2023. Now, to get you ready for this major crescendo moment, we have a very special guest, Brisbane's very own and incredibly talented Frankie Smart, who is going to lead you all in a little ditty to get you ready for 10,000 kazoo's.
Alright, thanks Lu. I know I've got a very short time.
Here we go.
Thanks Lu, sorry, there we go. I know I've got a short time, but coming off the record event of the FIFA Women's World Cup, I think we should pay homage to our incredible Matildas and sing a song on the kazoo, Waltzing Matilda. I'm sure we all know the chorus. So the best way to play your kazoo is on the thicker end of your biodegradable kazoo everyone. Everyone has to be involved. And you hum and you blow air out at the same time. So I'll sing the end of the verse and then we all just join in in the chorus. Ready? You'll come oh Waltzing Matilda with me. And thank you again for your support as well, it means the world to us, so thank you.
Councillor Howard, can I invite you to respond?
How do I respond to that, you will ask? Other than to say a huge thank you to Frankie and to Lu for doing that for us. I know that our committee had a little practice and so I was very proud to see that all of our committee members were primed and ready to go. Now, a lot of you may have just tried to blow into this thing, it does not work if you just blow into it. Lord Mayor, you might like to remember that when you take those home to the children. If you don't tell them to hum, you could have some peace and quiet for a little while. So it's really important to hum, isn't it, into it? And so Frankie, thank you so much. We just love Brisbane Festival. We know that it just brings so much joy to everyone in Brisbane and I'm really looking forward to having my 9,999 other friends join us at the wonderful Victoria Park to really make this a special event. And I know that the team have worked incredibly hard for this Brisbane Festival. I think it's the best one yet. I have everyone talking about all the amazing things that they're seeing, the lightscape, the salamander, I know that I have to get there Lu, I hear you, and of course Banana Land, which is launching. And there's just been so much buzz around the city about all of the things that you're doing. We love the fireworks, we love the whale, it's just been amazing. So I just want to say on behalf of everyone in the chamber, a huge thank you to Anna and to Charlie and to Lu and to Frankie for coming in today to share with us what a wonderful opportunity it is for us all to be kazoo players. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howard. I will remind councillors, there are some handouts up here on the media bench if you'd like to take them regarding Brisbane Festival. And can we please thank miss Bazina and miss Walters again for coming in today and delivering what is probably the most memorable public address that we've ever had? Thank you. Councillors, we move on to item four of the agenda. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair or any standing committee? Councillor Huang.
Thank you Mister Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee, councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cunningham, council recently received advice from the state government that land valuations would not be happening this year. Can you please update the chamber on the devil that is in this detail?
Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you Mister Chair and I thank my deputy chair councillor Huang for this very important question. I can confirm today to councillors that the State Valuer General has written to Brisbane City Council advising that this coming year, for the third time in the past seven years, the Brisbane local government area will not be revalued. This council has long expressed to the state government the view that it is important to provide annual updates to property values to ensure that rates can be levied in an equitable manner across the entire city. Have we had issues of the timing within a year that valuations have been undertaken? Absolutely yes Mister Chair, we have. For example, after last year's flood, we wanted the state to take another look at the valuation because it was taken at a time when the impact of the floods had not fully influenced the market. This was indeed something that Anna Bly had done after the 2011 floods. But the preference always remains for council to get an update in each year. You see, by not performing an annual valuation, issues can arise for properties in areas with significant value growth. If only valued after two years, this will incorporate two years of increases in one go, resulting in higher than expected increases for individual ratepayers. Similarly, in areas where there may be a decline in value, ratepayers may be left with the burden of paying higher rates. Mister Chair, in the eight years between 2010 and 2017, council received eight new valuations. But since then, we have missed out on new valuations in 2018 and in 2021. And now Mister Chair, we have learned we will not have new valuations in 24. What some may not realise is that ratepayers have to pay the state government a fee for valuations each and every year. Last year, that fee was $3 million. You would think the annual fees would reflect the work done by the state government in that particular year. So Mister Chair, do you think that the bill to ratepayers has decreased or increased since our service level was reduced? Well sadly for ratepayers, the fees under this Labor state government have of course increased. While councils continue to pay for land valuations whether they receive them or not, the state government uses those same values to levy land tax. We know the state government plan to raise more than $2 billion in land tax this year, a full 14% more than the previous year. This is in large part due to land tax bracket creep, which is of course driven by the very land valuations councils and their ratepayers are actually paying for. Mister Chair, I have a suspicion there is a reason that Brisbane is not receiving a new valuation this year. Because based on very recent figures published by REIQ, Brisbane house prices have fallen by two and a half percent year on year. So the situation that we find ourselves in is that the state government has captured land values at the top of the market in Brisbane and will levy land tax based on those figures. The same REIQ data shows that the Gold Coast house prices are up 3%. Is the Gold Coast getting revalued this year? Yes it is. Morton Bay prices are also up 3%. Is Morton Bay being revalued? Yes it is. Fraser Coast prices are up nearly 11%. Is Fraser Coast being revalued? You bet it is Mister Chair. Bundaberg house prices are up over 15%. Is Bundaberg being revalued? Do I even need to say it Mister Chair? Because of course they are. The state government should not treat councils and their ratepayers like a money tap. If the state is settled on not providing new valuations next year, they should at least significantly reduce or preferably scrap entirely the annual fee of $3 million.
Councillor Cunningham, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the councillor for Marchand Ward bizarrely announced her retirement on social media last Wednesday. This last term has been a tumultuous one for the councillor, first being sacked from Civic Cabinet by you, then calling members of the community fakes because they asked for transparency around the awarding of a secret lease to the Brisbane Racing Club. The council was then forced to admit the community's concerns about the 376 bus service being cut were all true despite dismissing them. Labor's candidate Darren Mitchell is well known to you Lord Mayor. You visited his house to announce his calls for the fire pit ban to be lifted a few years ago. So Lord Mayor, did councillor Hammond see the writing on the wall and announce that she was resigning before she was tapped on the shoulder by you?
Councillors please. Councillor, councillors please. Lord Mayor.
Point of order. It's not appropriate Mister.
Councillor Johnston, thank you. Councillor Johnston?
Yes, it's not appropriate for a councillor to call out that someone's a bully across the chamber and I would ask you to rule that as a point of disorder.
Thank you councillor Johnston. Councillor Hammond, would you care, not that it was recorded in the minutes, but I understand that we are not going to be calling out across the chamber? Is that clear? Thank you. We're going to listen to the Lord Mayor's response in silence. Lord Mayor.
Thank you Mister Chair. Councillor Cassidy wants to read a lot into a lot of things, but I wonder if his loss of councillor Cook meant the writing was on the wall for Labor or loss of councillor Cumming meant the writing was on the wall for Labor? I can tell you that councillor Hammond, who's been a fantastic and such a popular and well-supported local councillor, does see the writing on the wall for the Palashay government, which is why she is stepping down to run for another level of government, something she genuinely believes in. She cares about her community, she has served her community faithfully and now she wants to put her hand up to serve her community at another level of government. And that is something that I would support our team members doing at the right time. I would never want to hold anyone back from other opportunities, particularly as such wonderful local councillors who are passionate about their community like councillor Hammond has been. Look, in the end, this question just smacks of politics. It's what you would expect, it's what you would expect from a tired and out of touch opposition with nothing to talk about except playing the person rather than the issue. And look, I can tell, I can tell that the Labor Party's shaking in their boots about councillor Hammond running for another level of government. And the problem is councillor Cassidy, through you Mister Chair, always broadcasts the things that he's afraid about. He always lets it, makes it obvious and I know he is very afraid and he should be very afraid. But look, you know, in the end, in the end.
Just one, hey, no councillor Marks. Councillor Cassidy, do that again and you'll receive warnings. I clearly gave the stipulation before we started question time, not before we started question time, before that question was answered, that we were going to listen to the response in silence. You've gone against that order. Lord Mayor.
In the end, like anyone who makes a choice about their future and decides that they want to put their hand up to serve the people of Brisbane in another capacity, I wish councillor Hammond all of the best for the future. And I can say that if she is as half as good as a state member as she has been as a councillor, it'll be a fantastic outcome for the people of Stafford. And so in the end, I want to thank councillor Hammond for her service to the people of Brisbane and I wish her all the best for the future.
Thank you Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order. Councillor Adams.
Thank you Mister Chair. I would wish to suspend standing orders, remove a motion under section 12.
Seconded.
You've got three minutes.
Thank you Mister Chair. What we've just heard from councillor Cunningham is the third time since 2016, I think, as I know I was Finance Chair and I'm sure councillor Allen was too, when we are expected to pay millions of dollars in money to the state government for a service that is not going to be delivered. That is an absolute disgrace and in a time when the city is so focused on cost of living.
Point of order. Councillor Johnston?
Yes, what is this about? If the suspending orders have been too overturned, we have to understand why.
Yes, I believe.
And that's just a speech, it's not clear to me at all what this is about.
Councillor Johnston, I'm speaking. Thank you. I believe the deputy mayor is providing a reason why we are suspending standing orders. She has three minutes to do so and we are 20 seconds in. Well, if you would listen, you'd probably find out. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you Mister Chair. As I was saying, cost of living is front and foremost in the minds of everybody in Brisbane and across the country, not just the state.
Point of order Chair. Just seeking, yeah, just seeking your ruling on this.
Hang on councillor Cassidy, I haven't given you the call.
You just said point of order.
I haven't said your name. Councillor.
Thank you very much Chair. Just seeking your ruling on this, when Labor councillors move the suspension of standing orders, we are constantly told by you that we have to establish why this couldn't have been put on the agenda by 1pm yesterday. Just wondering whether you're going to enforce that for the majority of councillors as well?
Happy to do so, that deputy mayor, you do understand that this has to, you have to explain within the three minutes that I stipulated before I called you to speak as to why this couldn't have been done.
And I will, because unfortunately through you Mister Chair, they never do that, ever. But I am happy to explain that we found out in Cabinet. Yeah, no, it is right councillor Collier, I take your very rude interjection.
Through the, councillor Collier, we're not calling out. We are not doing this, alright? Deputy Mayor, if you're going to address another councillor, it's through the Chair, thank you.
I will do it through the Chair Mister Chair.
Thank you.
Sorry, as I was saying, we do never hear why it couldn't be on before one o'clock. But this is something that Cabinet members only found out about yesterday afternoon, well after one o'clock, and councillor Cunningham has just made it very clear that we're expecting guestimates this year for our land valuations. And I move that Brisbane City Council calls on the state government to remove valuation charges for local governments in years that they do not undertake valuations.
So we're going to move a motion to suspend standing orders.
Point of order Mister Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Can we have a copy of this please? It's not been provided to us and you always, you always require.
Just one moment, just one moment councillor Johnston, we are not.
Well, the LNP are getting copies.
Can you let me finish please? Don't give me that look councillor Johnson, I have no patience. The motion before us, stop speaking, the motion before us is for the suspension of standing orders, not a motion. It's the standard suspension standing orders motion. Right, councillors, we are going to vote on a motion to suspend standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Sorry Deputy Mayor. Could you move your motion please?
I move that Brisbane City Council calls on the state government to remove valuation charges for local governments in years they do not undertake valuations.
Seconded.
We have a motion moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Allen, that Brisbane City Council calls on the state government to remove valuation charges for local governments in years they do not undertake valuations. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you Mister Chair. As we have just heard, the state government will not be undertaking valuations this year, but of course they are still expecting to be paid for the service to the sum of more than $3 million. The Valuer General conducts property valuations for properties across Queensland and those property valuations are integral for council to determine the amount of rates charged to property owners across the city. But it is also the basis for the state government to levy land tax. So what we've clearly just heard is with the valuation undertaken this year, the only people who are going to suffer of course are the ratepayers of Brisbane whose land valuations may have gone down. But then of course the state government doesn't want their land tax to go down, so we still are seeing some councils that are getting their valuations done. And without updated valuations, Brisbane, we have to assess our valuations based on last year's figures, whether they went up or whether they went down. And this will be felt for the next three years until the next average ratable value is altered as well. This is the third time, as you heard councillor Cunningham say in seven years, that we have forgotten the valuation and the third time that we've had to pick up the bill for nothing. So this will take us to nearly $7 million worth of money handed for no service to the state government in the last six years. That is an absolute disgrace. Now, maybe it's because they don't have the resources to undertake the task, but I hear no, there are other councillors that are getting their valuations done. Are they ensuring that their land tax revenue is locked in for a certain level for next year? Well, call me a cynic, but I probably think that's where it's going, but at the cost to Brisbane ratepayers. We know that property prices in Brisbane have reached their peak, an all time high, and they are in some areas beginning to fall. Looking in the rate at the peak of the market, this is blatant predatory pricing by the state government. And we've just heard from councillor Cunningham that this means a $2 billion payday for the Palashay government, up 14% on the previous year. At a time when residents are facing crippling cost of living pressures, this is just another squeeze on the state government that they're putting on families to top up their own piggy bank. Brisbane ratepayers deserve better. They deserve a fair and equitable rating. They deserve to know they are getting a fair service from their rates and that seems to be too much to ask from the Palashay government. The least they can do is scrap the charge when the service is not delivered. That is a fair and reasonable ask and this motion calls on the state government to do exactly that. We'll pay when we get a service, that is expected, but remove the valuation charges for local governments in years that the service is not undertaken and I urge everyone in this chamber to vote for the support.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you Mister Chairman. I have never seen anything so politically ridiculous other than this motion. So firstly, the deputy mayor couldn't even explain what this motion was about. She cannot provide any evidence to support this. If there is, why weren't all councillors notified yesterday afternoon there was a serious problem? Where's the correspondence from the state government? Why hasn't that been tabled? Where is the advice that we're going to be charged for a service they're not providing? We don't know that any single thing that the deputy mayor has said to us today is true. The way in which this has been done indicates to me that this is just a political gamesmanship. It's designed to distract from the issues on the council agenda today that clearly show the financial incompetence of this LNP council administration. That is what this is. It's a bait and switch by the LNP. So if these things are true, that the deputy mayor has said, she must now table the correspondence from the state government showing that we have been told the things that she has said and when we were told. Because unfortunately the deputy mayor has form on this issue. Last time she moved an urgency motion in this place, the information had been in the public sphere for a week before she came in and moved an urgency motion. So if there is such a letter, table it now, that is my call. Let's see what the state government said. Let's see if they said they were going to charge this council for a service that they were not providing. And if the state government were planning to charge us for a service that they were not providing, then that is appalling behaviour. That would be unethical behaviour and I don't know whether or not it's even legal behaviour by the state government to charge for a service that it is not providing. So here is my question to the deputy mayor. Where is this correspondence? Why wasn't it provided to councillors? In her own words, she's known about this, Civic Cabinet's known about this since yesterday. So it's not a cabinet in confidence issue because it wasn't considered at Civic Cabinet, it was yesterday afternoon apparently. So it's not a confidential matter, but has this deputy mayor had the courtesy to raise this issue with all councillors yesterday afternoon and say, this is a serious issue, this is an important issue, we've only just found out about this, this is outrageous, I want all councillors to know what's going on? And did the deputy mayor do that? No, she didn't. No, she did not. So let's see this letter, let's see what the state government has actually told council. Let's see what the state government has actually told council. Let's go on the record now and let's have a look at what has been said. Because this is a stunt to distract from the financial mismanagement that is in the council papers before us today. So table the letter now, provide a copy to all councillors and demonstrate to us what it is the state government has said that apparently yesterday afternoon you were told about, but you couldn't be bothered to tell anybody else about.
Further speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Allen, please wait until I give you the call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to enter the debate on this motion. As the former finance chair, I understand the importance of the land valuations and impact it can have across our city. And I was finance chair when the state government last did this, where we were charged for a valuation that wasn't completed. So what we've got here is essentially, the motion is about the state government charging us for a service that they're not delivering. And to councillor Johnston's point, this has happened twice before. This isn't, this isn't a first time. You know, this has happened before. So, Mr. Chair.
Just one moment, councillor Allen. Councillor Johnston, there has been clear instruction during this session, during this meeting, not to yell out across the chamber. I make it very, very clear. You have a point of order.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's clear that councillor Allen has now indicated to the chamber, this is not an urgent matter, this is an ongoing matter that's happened several times.
Don't uphold your point of order, please resume your seat.
And I would ask you to rule the motion out of order.
Councillor Johnston, I do not uphold your point of order, please resume your seat. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The chamber would know that we use a three-year average of land values to determine property rates. This is to reduce the impact of significant upward valuation movements from year to year. However, without updated land valuations, we will need to rely on last year's figures. It is also interesting to note the land values have increased by 17.5% and 11.9% for 2022 and 23 respectively. These are the two highest percentage increases we have seen in land valuations over the past 13 years. Essentially, council will be prevented from passing on any decrease of land valuations when reviewing property rates, because the state has simply not undertaken the valuations. Mr. Chair, we also know that land valuations inform the calculations of state land tax, as councillor Adams outlined. In a time when new housing stock is desperately needed across the city, we see the state government creating confusion in the sector by not reviewing the land valuation. This isn't just about the big end of town. It creates doubt for both owners, owner occupiers, investors, for developers and home builders. We know the housing sector is facing difficulties delivering new homes, whether it's rising construction costs, rising interest rates, supply chain issues, labour shortages. All of these things affect project feasibilities and the uncertainty around land valuations and land tax is also going to create additional uncertainty. Mr. Chair, it is no secret this side of the chamber sees the benefits of a build-to-rent development in our city. We've been encouraging build-to-rent. It is an opportunity to provide more housing in this city. In this current climate, banks are increasingly reluctant to lend for build-to-sell without a majority of apartments pre-sold. Therefore, in an uncertain economic environment, build-to-rent has sparked strong interest from investors.
Just one moment, councillor Allen, point of order, councillor Massey?
Relevance to the motion.
Your point of order is on relevance?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about this, what's build-to-rent to deal with this motion?
Councillor Allen, I'm not going to uphold councillor Massey's point of order, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it will become evident. So in the current environment, build-to-rent has sparked strong interest from investors and developers and banks. However, the unfavourable tax treatment of build-to-rent investments has been a barrier to investment. Last month, the state announced a land tax concession for build-to-rent developments. Now, that was a welcome announcement by the state for the sector. However, this positive announcement is diminished by the confusion created by not undertaking land valuations. Mr. Chair, in an environment where we need to pull every lever possible to deliver more housing across the city, not undertaking land valuations is clearly not helpful and creates uncertainty within the property market. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair, I rise to speak on this motion. And from my understanding, the decision around land valuations is undertaken by the Valuer General, independent of government, independent of the political process. I would, happy to be staying corrected by any councillors on the other side, but the decision, but the decision whether to undertake valuations is done independent of the political process. But what the LNP are trying to do today is insert a political process into land valuations. So we heard this bizarre, last week, this bizarre position of the Lord Mayor saying that raising concerns about the LNP council's decisions that were being audited by an independent audit committee was somehow attacking an independent body? Well, that's what we've got today from the LNP. So the LNP are today attacking the Valuer General. That's what's happening here today, because it's an independent process, independent of government. Now, but I do understand, I actually do understand why the LNP are so upset about this, is because they are desperate for rates revenue. They're desperate for an increase in land valuations. This is a real Trojan horse by the LNP, because they've talked about, they've talked about in the absence of valuations happening, that they just have decided that land valuations would go down. We don't know that, but that's what they're, that's their argument. The core of their argument is apparently they know that land valuations will go down and rate payers will have a decrease in rates. The LNP have never delivered a decrease in rates in their 20 years in power, never. They froze rates for six months, but when they did it, they built in a percentage increase. So after the end of that six months, the rates base went up exponentially. And those people that had a six-month reprieve had to pay double in the next six months to catch up on that. So the LNP have absolutely no shame when it comes to raising rates revenue off suburban Brisbane. And the LNP are complaining bitterly about a $3 million bill that they're going to have to pay, and sure, they can have that argument as well. And I thought it was interesting what the deputy mayor said, that Brisbane rate payers deserve better and they deserve a service for that fee. Well, I do agree with that, and I agree that rate payers do deserve better than what they're getting from this LNP administration. We see in the, and the reports that we'll be discussing a bit later on, that almost half a billion dollars of revenue that was taken in from rate pays in the last year wasn't spent on delivering services and projects in the suburbs of Brisbane. There's a $500 million surplus sitting in the consolidated financial reports there, which shows that all of those projects were delayed, that they were carried over into another financial year, that they were cut altogether. We know from last week's quans that the LNP have spent $4.5 million on their advertising budget. We see that ramping up in the lead-up to the next election. So if they're looking for $3 million to save somewhere, maybe they should cut it from the advertising budget. Councillor Allen, of course, knows well how important land valuations are to the LNP, because when he was the Chair of the Finance Committee, and when councillor Adams was Chair of the Finance Committee, and when councillor Shrunna was Chair of the Finance Committee, and now councillor Cunningham, Chair of the Finance Committee, they just see, they just see the rate payers of Brisbane as rivers of gold for their own self-interests. Maybe if we didn't see a billion-dollar blowout on the metro, maybe if we didn't see a $100 million blowout on one single bridge in the city, or an $83 million blowout on one park in the inner city, or an undisclosed blowout on the Mogal Road project, and allowed to talk about that, of course, because that's commercial in confidence and the massive delays in their project, maybe the rate payers of Brisbane wouldn't have such pressure on them from this LNP administration. We've seen now, on this LNP mayor's watch, a 17% rates hike. And that's got absolutely nothing to do with a $3 million fee that council's required to pay for land valuations. That's all to do with the political decisions of this LNP administration. People in the suburbs are missing out. They do deserve better value for money, but that's not what this motion is all about. What this motion is all about is about politics and about picking a fight with the state government. And it's all about the LNP really belling the cat when they are actually desperate to see valuations go ahead, because they want to see an increase in official land value so they can jack up rates, and they've got some cover for it, so they can blame somebody else for it. And that's what we've come to expect from this LNP administration. After 20 years, they're out of ideas, they're out of puff, and all they've got, all they've got left is a cooked-up political fight with another level of government. And that really is sad for the rate payers of Brisbane. And I do agree with councillor Johnston's point. Apparently, the administration got a, got a letter from, they don't, they didn't say who, maybe it was the Valuer General, and I assume that's who they're attacking now, the Valuer General, the LNP are attacking the Valuer General. We assume it might be from them, because we understand the process, but they really aren't clear about that. Maybe it was from a minister in the state government? I don't know that, the deputy mayor hasn't been very clear about that. If, yeah, if that information was tabled, maybe in summing up, the deputy mayor will get up and read through that and explain it and give us the exact time that it came in and the implications going forward. But, but we haven't got any of that in this discussion. What we have got was all politics and political point scoring. So if the administration, who are obviously, you know, running scared and looking for someone to have a fight with, are actually interested in a policy outcome today, then sure, we'd be up for the debate. But it's pretty clear so far, all they're interested in is a story, you know, a media stunt here, a bit of politicking in council to sort of cover up the day's agenda before us today, which is pretty bleak. It's a pretty bleak report card on this LNP administration's performance over the last 12 months, particularly leading into what will be a critical election for this city's future. So, I mean, in the absence of any actual facts on the table or any genuine argument from the LNP, we won't be supporting this motion today.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. A couple of things that I'd like to point out to councillors in the chamber. This issue is a real problem for Brisbane City Council officers, and it is something that they have litigated numerous times over many years with officers from the state government. Now is the time to take this further. We know that rate payers will be charged, because they did it in 2018, and they charged them again in 2021. The state has charged us before, Mr. Chair, and they will charge us again, $3 million for the privilege of no service. Now, Mr. Chair, through you, councillor Cassidy wasn't listening when I gave the answer to my deputy councillor Huang. Land valuations have gone down in Brisbane, according to REIQ, which means residents are paying more in their rates than what their property is valued. They have lost value in their property. He clearly wasn't listening, Mr. Chair. They are accusing us of politics, Mr. Chair, but he has absolutely no credibility on this issue, because, you know, the last time that they were in this place, and that they are in charge of setting rates in this place, they went up by over 6%. Not once, but four times, Mr. Chair. We are the party who will manage the Brisbane City Council finances responsibly, and we are asking for $3 million to not be charged to rate payers unfairly, because we'd rather see that $3 million go into cost of living relief.
Councillor Cassidy?
Towards road upgrades, Mr. Chair, instead of continuing to pay for a service that we simply aren't receiving. Mr. Chair, the ALP has no credibility on this issue, and we are standing up for rate payers of Brisbane.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. Are there further speakers on the motion? Councillor Massey?
Thank you, Chair. I'll speak briefly to this. What's still unclear about this motion is how the debate here is actually going to stop state government from charging the fee. Like, literally, we could, we could be here, like, we've suspended, we've suspended standing, you know, orders. There's clearly a challenge in there, because we keep saying that we've gone through this before, that the information is there. The information that we're looking for is still not tabled. Where is this letter? Who was the letter from? What is the information we need from it? Right? And this being debated here is obviously political. Right? It's obviously political. It's, it's $3 million when we have overspend and mixed management across Brisbane City Council. And in this sense, the debate here actually doesn't stop state government from charging us. Does it? No, it doesn't. So we know that this is a political debate. We know this is a distraction from the rest of what we'll be discussing in the rest of this agenda. And I compel, and I agree with the councillor, through you, Chair, from Tennyson, where is the information? Where are the details? If this letter was received yesterday, at whatever time, why has it still not been tabled, through you, Chair, by the deputy mayor? You know, this is a stunt, because we know it does nothing whether this motion is passed. And that is a real, real, real disappointment in how we're dealing with today's agenda.
Thank you, councillor Massey. Are there further speakers to the motion? See no one standing. Deputy Mayor, write a reply.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I very clearly heard from those in the opposition was that when you suspend standing orders for their motion, they're worthwhile, but when you suspend standing orders for motions that support the people of Brisbane, from the LNP side, they're not worthwhile, which is very disappointing.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston?
The deputy mayor is clearly imputing motive in respect of my comments. I've made no such remarks, and I'd ask that that's withdrawn.
I did not hear your name mentioned, councillor Johnston.
Yes, it, I don't have to be specifically mentioned, is my understanding, but the deputy mayor is imputing motive on previous speakers, of which I was one, that motive is inappropriate under the standing orders, and I would ask you to rule it out of order.
Deputy Mayor, you're aware that there's no privilege in this place?
I absolutely do. And as I said, what I heard, and what I did hear.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order.
I did not raise a matter of privilege. I raised the issue of imputing motive, which is unsuitable meeting conduct under the meeting's local law.
Councillor Johnston? Councillor Johnston? I believe the deputy mayor was actually speaking to what she actually said. She got up to speak. Your point of order?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah?
The deputy mayor stood up and basically said she'd heard from opposition councillors that we didn't care about the residents of Brisbane. That is imputing motive. And I would ask that you withdraw it.
Councillor Johnston, I'm not, no, I'm not going to uphold your point of order. It's just annoying now. Deputy Mayor.
Point of order. Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Your language is inappropriate.
Thank you, councillor Johnston.
And should not be used.
Noted, it's, will be in the business. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, your point, ah, not your point of order, sorry. You've got the call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll reiterate again what I heard, and we can go and check the Hansard, but the councillor for Tennyson, I'll repeat it directly, utterly the most disgusting political motion I've ever heard in this place, word for word. Out of your mouth, councillor Johnston, through you, Mr. Chair, but we do know that it's so fleeting when it goes through your head, you can totally forget what you do within 20 minutes, because that is what you said, and that is what I heard. And what that means is.
Deputy Mayor, can we get back to the wrap-up, please?
I'm getting back to the wrap-up of why this motion is important, and they have dismissed it as politics.
Where's the letter?
Councillor Johnston, you've been warned about calling out across the chamber. Deputy Mayor, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We heard from councillor Allen very clearly what the uncertainty around land valuations mean within the property market, in a time when the property market is struggling to get, to get property onto the land, when we are pulling every lever we possibly can, and then we get information from the Treasury that they're not doing land valuations this year. That is a lever that the Palache government, that the Palache government has the ability to change. We actually had this debate 15, 16 years ago, I was going to say with Anna Bly, and she changed it when she heard. So if Anna Bly can change it, but you're telling me that Premier Palache can't, well, might sum up that disaster of an media interview yesterday afternoon. When everybody says they support you, and then they say, I'm staying, we know what happens with the Labour leadership, don't we? But of course, what we did hear from councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr. Chair, is the world of casanomics. The verbaling rhetoric from councillor Cassidy.
The verbally rhetoric from councillor Cassidy just does not add up. Didn't add up two weeks ago when he made enormous fiscal mistakes around the budget review and it doesn't add up today. The people in Brisbane know, they know, that this administration is the only one that will continually deliver the lowest rates in South East Queensland. They also recognise what they don't need and that is a Greens Labor coalition of chaos who have no idea how to read a profit and loss statement, taking over the financial management of this city. But beyond the $3 million that we are expected to say, pay for a service that is not being delivered, is what this does to the hip pocket, the actual hip pocket when it comes to rates and land valuations over the next three years. It's not good enough. And councillor Johnson agreed. Councillor Johnson said, if that is actually what is happening, I acknowledge that is not good enough. So I hope that she comes and stands with us when we have a division and makes it very clear to the government, it's not good enough. You should not have to pay $3 million for a service that you do not receive. I move this council supports the removal of valuation charges when valuations are not undertaken. Thank you, Mr Chair.
We'll now put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. I believe the ayes have it.
Division seconded.
Division called by councillor Adams and seconded by councillor Hutton. Ayes to my right and ayes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and four abstentions.
Councillors, the motion has passed. Please resume your seats and we'll continue question time. Councillor Landers.
Thank you Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, with term three coming to an end, can you please update the chamber on how the Shrima Council is reducing the cost of living for families this coming school holidays?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. And I think, through you, Mr Chair, I thank councillor Landers for the question. The Shrima Council is committed to delivering a better Brisbane and as part of that, we're always working hard, creating more to see and do so that residents and visitors can enjoy the very best that Brisbane has to offer. And with school holidays kicking off at the end of this week, you can be sure that we've lots on offer to keep our little ones occupied with all sorts of fun, free or low cost activities. Times are tough with the cost of living increasing everywhere you turn. Residents can rest assured that we've got their backs with the Shrima Council's school holiday programme continuing to deliver hundreds of free or low cost activities for the whole family to enjoy on the school holidays. Including the park play programme at the beautiful Victoria Park, featuring live performances from everyone's favourite koala, Blinky Bill, on the 19th and 26th of September. Or pump up the energy with some freestyle soccer coaching in Paddington. Or learn some fun basketball skills and games in Brackenridge. Our free options include Zumba Kids at Sandgate, a skateboarding workshop at Upper Mount Gravat and Quest Football Academy Fun Football for all our future matildas and socaroes wanting to up their game. Activate fun and games at Keith Park Payne, sorry, at Keith Payne Park, I'm having the same problem as you had earlier, Mr Chair. Activate fun and games at Keith Payne Park in Stafford with egg and spoon races and drama based interactive games. Dungeons and Dragons at Winham Library, coding fun at Indrapilly Library with the Ozbot Dance Party, absailing at Kangaroo Point Cliffs, a puppet show with Bee Happy Puppets and even Ninja Warrior training at Lotter. And of course, don't forget the Brisbane Festival. And as we heard on the 23rd of September, you can join the world's biggest kazoo orchestra ever at the 10,000 Kazoos event at Victoria Park. And through you, Mr Chair, might I say, I do have some additional kazoo's if people want to take some more when they leave today. You'll be provided with your very own kazoo before being invited to take a deep breath and join as one to release the mightiest chorus of kazoo's this city has ever seen and heard. If you're not checking out one of the many free activities we have on offer, our low cost programmes provide excellent value for money, providing plenty of options for all ages and interests. Because in Brisbane, you pay less and get more. Kids of all ages love laser tag and these holidays at Woolangaba, you can get three games for $10, which will keep everyone entertained for hours. Your kids will have a ball learning the basics of fishing or brushing up on their skills with Fishwise for just $6 for three hours of outdoor fun. For creatives and budding fashion designers, you can design and print your own tote bag again for just $6. Another $6 activity is stand up paddle boarding in Manly, where your lesson includes safety and awareness, paddle techniques and activity tips. And older kids in the tween and teenage brackets aren't forgotten with plenty happening at council's Visible Inc. From jam sessions to art circles and even a youth takeover of Queen Street Mall stage, the Visible Inc hub is the perfect place for creative teens looking to explore their passions. The Visible Inc holiday programme includes media studio inductions where budding music producers and performers can try out our state of the art facilities. There's a jam session happening on Wednesday the 27th of September from 5:30pm and an art circle every Thursday from 4 to 6pm. There will be a special live in the library session held from 12:15pm on Sunday the 24th of September at Indrapilly Library, where you can check out two live sets showcasing the original sounds of Brisbane's talented young musicians. On Thursday the 28th of September, there will be a youth takeover of the Queen Street Mall stage, featuring performances from dance crews and musicians as well as collaborative art activity to lead our talented young artists from Visible Inc. We've also got a jam packed schedule of stellar school holidays fun at the Sir Thomas Brisbane Planetarium, with many shows offering adult tickets at children's prices to make space exploration even more affordable. With around 1,000 attendees expected every day over the September holiday break, families will be able to enjoy the fantastic shows on offer, including two new programmes that transports them across the universe, including Tycho Goes to Mars, Perfect Little Planet, Passport to the Universe and Cosmic Collisions. Families won't have to go further than Brisbane's own backyard these school holidays, lots of free and cheap kid friendly activities on offer. School holidays are the perfect time for families to make the most of our city and we will always make sure that everyone gets the chance to make the most of it, no matter what their budget is.
Councillor Howard, I'm sorry, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I refer you to the Establishment and Coordination Committee report, item E, Stewards Board submission, amendment to significant contracting plans for the design and construction of the Kangaroo Point Greenbridge and Mogal Road Corridor Upgrade Project on page 17 and page 18 of the council papers before us today. There is absolutely no reference in the council report to any changes to the Mogal Road Corridor Project. None. Why has no information been provided to Brisbane residents and councillors in the report about the changes to the Mogal Road Corridor Project?
Lord Mayor, that was a rather long preamble. Do you need that in writing or are you happy to answer the question?
In writing, I don't need it.
Well, as far as I can see, that's simply not a true statement that's been made. The information has in fact been provided.
Further questions?
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Mr Chairman, I just refer you to page 17 and 18 of the ENC report. This was a genuine question. Paragraphs 34 to 42 and then the attachment A-
Councillor Johnson, sorry, what's your point of order?
Well, my point of order is there's no information in the report about the Mogal Road Corridor Project.
And the Lord, the Lord Mayor provided an answer. Thank you.
But there, no, but Mr Chairman, you are responsible for the council papers before us and I'm saying to you, there is no information in the report about the Mogal Road Corridor Project. How are we supposed to address this when there's no information in the report?
Mr Chair, if you'll give me the leeway, I'm happy to actually read what's in the report, word for word.
Point of order. I'm asking the Chair.
Hang on, just one moment, just one moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Johnson, we're not going to call out across the chamber. We're not going to call out across the chamber. I don't uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor, would you kindly, did you want to provide a personal response?
Well, either they want to hear or they don't want to hear. Oh, the Labor doesn't want to hear me, that's fine.
Thank you. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
I'm raising a procedural issue here. There is no information in this report about the Mogal Road Corridor Project changes and I'm asking you as the chairman, why that information has not been provided to councillors for debate today?
Don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, Brisbane was a hive of activity last weekend with tens of thousands of interstate visitors coming into the city for multiple major events. Can you please update the chamber on how weekends like this benefit Brisbane businesses and keep our local economy strong?
Thank you councillor Hutton. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And I am more than happy to talk about how our city was a hive of activity last weekend. Thank you councillor Hutton for the question. We had more than a quarter of a million visitors descended on Brisbane for a bumper weekend of footy finals, Brisbane Festival, race day, and there was also some polo down at Lara Pintura as well. We know that when the Brisbane Airport is busy, our hotels, our bars, our restaurants, our cafes and our city streets are busy as well. It was the Broncos' first home final in six years at Suncorp Stadium in front of a packed house and I still can't believe they kept the storm to zero. Like, knew they would win but was amazed they kept them to zero. Fantastic. Caxton Street was heaving before, during, well, and truly after the game. This was an absolute historic win that Brisbane celebrated big time. And of course, it was a big win for Broncos but an even bigger win for our Brisbane businesses. It is fantastic to see this iconic precinct back in full swing and doing what they do best. And then across town, just a night later in the Gabba, we saw another sellout crowd cheering on the Lions in a qualifying finals win against Port Adelaide. You'll be glad to know, councillor Mackay, I'm sure you were there, that those of us who are here at the Lord Mayor's Channel Trust were getting the updates to make sure we knew what was going on. But we are so excited that they are a step closer to breaking the club's 20 year premiership drought. But again, this is why we have claimed the title of Australia's sporting capital. With just under nine years until the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, you can see Brisbane rising the top of global ranks when it comes to sporting cities in the world. We have world class stadiums near the city, vibrant precincts, year round sunshine, great public transport, which all help to make Brisbane the ideal destinations for fans to experience major sporting events. But it's not just the sport that makes our city one of the best places to live and visit. We work incredibly hard through not only the lifestyle and community arts and night time economy, but also through BEATUP to make sure our major events calendar is packed out across the year. Sports and arts and culture and business, there is something for everyone. As we heard earlier from Louise and Frankie, Brisbane Festival has officially taken over Brisbane at the moment with more than 1,000 events across the city over the month and we're only halfway through. I've enjoyed the Spiegel tent, I've seen an early peek of Banana Land, but apparently Salamander is the absolute one not to miss. It will be going global. It apparently is spectacular. But the festival itself is just a homegrown favourite that continues to dazzle each and every year. And it draws crowds from near and far. River Fire this year was one of our biggest and best and the crowds definitely voted with their feet. Over half a million residents and visitors sat on the banks of our river. It was a fantastic display of fireworks, flyovers and the first for Brisbane, a spectacular drone flying through the river, performing the First Nations story Spirit of the Whale. There's also dance theatre, music singalongs, caribou race, block parties and hopefully councillors have enjoyed their street serenades as they continue through our local suburbs. Nine world premieres, two Australian premieres and 11 Queensland premieres, plus more than 1,400 Queensland based artists and art workers, taking 57 arts organisations to get involved and over 170 First Nations artists joining in. We are always incredibly proud to support this festival year on year and it's fantastic to see it lining up with two fantastic nights of rugby league. But as I mentioned, that's not all. On the north side, there was another type of cultural carnival taking place and that was Country Music Day at Dumben. So it was horses and boot scootin' cowboys and cowgirls filling the racetrack for a fantastic day out in sunshine on Saturday. Not your traditional race day, but certainly a crowd pleaser. And the racing industry, regardless of what some people try to say, is growing from strength to strength. It is employing more locals and pumping more dollars back into our economy. It employs more than 6,000 people and generates over $1 billion each year, every year. And as I said, we know that the Greens are pushing to have this industry shut down, but this industry is well and truly alive and not slowing down anytime soon. And then let's add to that the school holidays coming up. There's plenty of free and affordable fun, as we've just heard as well, with more than 500 events to choose from. But of course, every time somebody comes into South Bank or goes to a local park to enjoy their holidays, they usually frequent one of the local cafes or the local restaurants as well. I know the Lord Mayor has just launched the exciting new show at the Planetarium to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Pink Floyd's at the Planetarium. There is a little bit for everybody. Brisbane just keeps ticking and making our city an even better place to live and visit.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Collier, sorry, councillor Collier.
Thank you Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in the midst of a housing and homelessness crisis, the LMP, will the LMP Council stop printing and mailing Living in Brisbane newsletters and put that money into more homelessness services?
Lord Mayor.
I think a more appropriate question to ask, Mr Chair, through you, would be, will Labor councillors and Greens councillors stop opposing housing during a housing crisis? That would actually be more relevant because we've seen tens of thousands of potential homes coming through here for approval, which Labor and Greens councillors have voted against. And then they say that somehow a newsletter is going to solve the housing crisis. Who are these people, Mr Chair? Like, do they really live in some kind of bubble where they are so out of touch with reality that they're coming here and vote against homes? They vote against homes week in, week out and then they think a newsletter is going to solve the housing crisis? Are you for real? And what's more, just a few days ago, I think Labor councillors were complaining that apparently not enough people had signed up to the voluntary alert system. And, and you know, this is one of the ways that we've actually been able to get an extra 10,000 people sign up through Living in Brisbane, yet they're complaining that apparently not enough people are signing up. Look, the reality is, we see, we see Labor, you know, you know when they're really desperate because they mention Living in Brisbane? And they're like, they're sitting around the table and they've lost the brains trust to councillors today and they're like, what are we going to ask in question time? Living in Brisbane. Let's ask about Living in Brisbane. It is pathetic. It is pathetic. There are real issues facing people and they talk about a newsletter, yet at the same time, they send out their own newsletters with seven photos of themselves. If you lead by example councillor Collier and councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair, and cancel your own newsletter, then maybe I'll take you seriously. But you'll never do that because this is purely another political question which shows just how out of touch with reality they are, how in the bubble they are.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, just on relevance, this is really puerile from the Lord Mayor. The question was actually whether he would cancel the Living in Brisbane newsletter and put that money into homelessness services or not. You've let him go for quite a bit, but there actually is a question to be answered in there.
Yes, yeah. I believe the Lord Mayor has partially answered that question so far, Lord Mayor.
Well, you know, there's one area where we're really wanting to put $1 million into homelessness out of Pinkham Bar, we're waiting. We're waiting. And on top of that, we introduced for the first time ever- And on top of that, we introduced, for the first time ever in Brisbane City Council's history, the Pathways Out of Homelessness Grant Programme, which is going exceedingly well and supporting amazing projects. Labour never did that, they never had that programme. And so, you know, the reality is that where they've had opportunities to do real things and support real things, they oppose them for political reasons and they just want to talk about a newsletter.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Dixon.
My question is to the Chair of Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shriner Council has been strong advocates for the Pincunbar quarantine facility to be used as temporary crisis accommodation during the housing crisis. Can you please update the chamber on the current status of this proposal?
Thank you councillor Dixon. Councillors, a bit of quiet, please. Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and it is a very timely question through you, Mr Chair, by councillor Dixon and I thank councillor Dixon.
Councillor Johnson, please. It's audible from up here. Councillor Howard, you've got the call.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
All through the previous answer, the deputy mayor was very audible, so is it...
Councillor Johnson, councillor Johnson, councillor Johnson, councillor Johnson?
Is my time still spinning?
Is it your ruling, Mr Chair, that interjections can't be audible? And if so, even now the deputy mayor is interjecting while I'm speaking.
Councillor Johnson, let me provide a ruling for you.
Well, I'd like to just make my point, which is...
If you would like to have a conference with your Greens colleagues or anybody else within the chamber, can you please take it outside?
Excuse me? I'm not talking to anybody, Mr Chair, I've risen on a point of order and I'm just saying to you...
I'm giving you a ruling to your point of order.
You won't let me speak.
I just, you've just, you were complaining about other people talking while you were talking.
I'm raising a point of order, Mr Chair, about the deputy mayor interjecting and you're not calling her on that. So you are apparently calling my interjections, why have you not called the deputy mayor's?
No, councillor Johnson, that is not what I was doing. I was saying that the conversation that you were having with your colleague next to you was audible from here.
I'm not having a conversation with anybody. Why are you making this up? Why are you making things up? I'm not having a conversation with anybody. Clearly I'm not. Why are you making this up, Mr Chair?
Councillor Johnson, I consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct and in accordance with section 21.4 of the Meeting's local law, I hereby request that you cease interjecting, having conversations with other councillors while others are speaking and refrain from speaking while I am speaking. Thank you, you may be seated. Councillor Howard, you've got the call.
Mr Chair, your behaviour today is appalling. I dissent in your motion. You have made up what you've just said, you have made it up. I move dissent in your ruling.
I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Massey. There has been a motion of dissent in my ruling, moved by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Massey. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Massey. Can you please ring the bells? Ayes to my right and noes to my left. I still have the mic on, I have... Councillors, 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 stop. We have a motion of dissent. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being four in favour and 18 against.
The motion has lost. Please resume your seats. Councillors, I'll remind you that during question time, we are going to be silent. Councillor Howard, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognise the amazing efforts of the many community support organisations who've been doing incredible work across the city to assist those at risk or experiencing homelessness. We know that countless people across the city are doing it tough right now during the housing and cost of living crisis and I think that it's safe to say that the collective efforts of these organisations has been incredibly valued by all residents of Brisbane. As all those in the chamber know, homelessness is a complex issue and in challenging times like these, all options to assist those at risk or experiencing homelessness should be put on the table and seriously considered. That's why, beginning in July 2022, as the Pincunbar Quarantine Facility was completed and its use as a quarantine facility was no longer required, Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna began his advocacy for the facility to be activated to assist those at risk or experiencing homelessness in Brisbane. After long and lengthy correspondence with both the Federal Minister for Finance and the then Housing Minister, Minister Enoch, council was permitted to undertake a tour of this facility in late 2022. The Lord Mayor and I were fortunate enough to tour this facility with representatives from community support organisations, where we were shown the facilities and accommodation. Touring the site with community support providers gave us valuable insights about this brand-new facility, including the fact that this facility could support up to 500 people with emergency accommodation and a roof over their heads. That means the ability to assist hundreds of families either at risk or experiencing homelessness as they transition into more permanent housing solutions. What followed after this tour was an urgent request by the Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna to the then Minister for Housing that the state government prepare and submit the required proposal to the federal government to activate this facility for the purposes of short-term emergency accommodation. Now, after more than 400 days of advocacy by the Lord Mayor, 274 days since first calling on the state government to make a submission to the federal government to activate this facility, and 134 days since this very council moved a motion for the state and federal governments to immediately activate this facility, we have yet to hear when the state government will act and activate this facility for the purposes of short-term crisis accommodation. So unfortunately councillor Dixon, through you, Mr Chair, the only update on the proposal to activate the Pincunbar Quarantine Facility is that there is no update from the state government, with council and the residents of Brisbane being no closer to understanding the future use of this facility than they were many months ago. While we welcome the robust conversations that we had with Minister Enoch and Minister Scanlon earlier this year and the state government's announcement in June 2023 that they would be committing up to $10 million to activate this facility, neither my office nor relevant council offices have since heard about the intended use of the $1 million the Shriner Council has put on the table to activate this facility. At present, this critical funding is proposed to go towards support such as laundry, transport and library services, dependent on the mix of residents occupying the facility. Now that this funding has been confirmed in the 2023/24 budget, council is very keen to put this funding to good use to support any state-led activation of this facility. The Shriner Council continues to believe that the activation of this site could go a long way to assist Brisbane's vulnerable residents with safe and secure emergency accommodation. While recognising that this facility was not built specifically for the purposes of this type of accommodation, as our city grapples with low rental availability and a strained public housing system, more must be done in the immediate short term to assist the families and individuals in desperate need of a roof over their head in Brisbane. In the absence of any updates from the state government, we will continue the great work done by our public space liaison officers, who continue to work hard to support those at risk or experiencing homelessness in Brisbane. We will also continue the initiatives that we know are making a big difference across the city, like our Pathways Out of Homelessness Grant Programme, which so far has supported more than 3,700 individuals since it was first announced in 2019. We are a council that is seriously committed to assisting those at risk or experiencing homelessness and we stand by our commitment of $1 million on the table to support the state-led activation of the Pincunbar Quarantine Facility. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you councillor Howard, that ends question time.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order councillor Collier.
I move that this council immediately reallocate all funding allocated to Living in Brisbane newsletter. Oh, sorry, I move a suspension of standing orders in order to move a motion.
Just seconded. Thank you. We have a suspension of standing orders moved by councillor Collier, seconded by councillor Cassidy. Councillor Collier, you've got three minutes.
Thanks, Chair. I would like to move a motion that this council immediately reallocate all funding allocated to Living in Brisbane newsletter for the remainder of the 2023/24 financial year to the Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme. We have just heard that more must be done from councillor Howard and the Lord Mayor and I agree. This side of the chamber, we agree. We have just heard that there are no plans, no plans to put more money into homelessness services by this LNP council. This is a very clear position of this council, that it is their priority, as they've just outlined, that spending money on marketing themselves in a lead-up to an election is their choice. Just now, we have heard that the LNP think that putting their own names and faces on millions and millions of glossy flyers...
Councillors, please. Councillor Collier, you've got the call.
Millions and millions of glossy flyers is more important than helping out the most vulnerable people across Brisbane. How out of touch can you get? I really want to add that there's an amazing team of public space liaison officers employed by this council. These staff work with the most vulnerable people.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order councillor Howard.
Mr Chair, I understood that the three minutes was to establish why this couldn't have been put on the programme.
That's, that's correct, councillor Collier. Although I do understand that councillor Collier is addressing statements that were said earlier within the meeting, so councillor Collier, could you please continue?
Yes, thanks, Chair. And through you, Chair, councillor Howard did say more must be done and I want to acknowledge the work that is being done by the PSLOs. They work with the most vulnerable people going above and beyond in what they do. I think everyone agrees with that. Yes, everyone agrees with that. We should all be thanking them for the work that they do. While they work hard in the streets of Brisbane, day and night helping people, the LNP council's advertising team get more funding and more resources than they do. This LNP council is spending millions more on advertising than on homelessness services and the Brisbane Labour team think that that is wrong. This is urgent because the budget for the Living in Brisbane newsletter, the LNP advertise themselves in, costs four times per year more than the budget for our amazing homelessness officers. We just heard that loud and clear. In the midst of a housing and homelessness crisis, the LNP will not stop printing and mailing out Living in Brisbane newsletters and put that money into more services. They have no shame. It is urgent that we debate this today because every minute goes by and someone is experiencing housing and homelessness that this council can actually help. With the stroke of a pen today, this LNP council could make a real difference...
Councillor Collier, your three minutes has expired. Thank you. We now have a procedural motion put for us to suspend standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The noes have it. Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please read the results. Quiet, please councillors.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being four in favour and 19 against.
Councillors, the procedural motion has not passed. Please resume your seats. Yes, councillors, please resume your seats. Good afternoon, councillor Adaman. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee, please.
Sorry, point of order, Chair.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much. I move that the motion currently lying on the table, that Brisbane City Council notes its support for the federal government's Housing Australia Future Fund now comes off the table.
Seconded.
Just give me one moment. We do have a motion before us to take a tabled motion off the table, moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Would you, would you mind if I read the motion councillor Cassidy? Brisbane City Council notes its support for the federal government Housing Future Fund and that that motion be taken off the table. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The noes have it. Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being four in favour and 19 against.
Councillors, councillors, please. The procedural motion to take the motion read off the table has not passed. Please resume your seats. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report, please.
Point of order, sorry, Chair.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I move that the motion currently lying on the table, the Brisbane City Council commits to buying all future buses from South East Queensland manufacturers now come off the table.
Seconded.
Just one moment, I'll get the paperwork, thank you. We have a motion, we have a procedural motion before us to take the motion that Brisbane City Council commits to buying future buses from South East Queensland manufacturers come off the table. It was moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Councillors, a bit of quiet, please. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being four in favour and 19 against.
Councillors, the procedural motion has not passed. Please resume your seats. Just one moment. Councillor Cassidy, do we have anything else? More business to come off the table? No. More business to come off the table? No. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Well played, councillor Cassidy, well played. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Thursday, 7th of September 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Thursday, the 7th of September 2023 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Before I move on to items in front of us, given that Living in Brisbane has been mentioned for the, you know, 300th time in council, I think it's important to provide a history lesson because there are some people that may have changed their positions and may not be aware of this, but Living in Brisbane was introduced by the Labor Party. The Labor Party. And in fact, the mentor of the current sitting councillors and their Lord Mayor candidate, Jim Sawley, introduced Living in Brisbane. And it's, you know, it's quite ironic because you'll remember at the last election, Labor councillors dishonestly campaigned on this allowance that was introduced. And it was, once again, their allowance that they introduced. It was introduced by Jim Sawley. And so, once again, we see this dishonest approach in forgetting the fact that they were the ones that did something and now they're against it suddenly. But there is another important difference because when the Labor administration was in office, Living in Brisbane was politicised. Politicised. And in fact, all of the chairs of committees actually got their own articles and their own quotes. And now, yeah, it was, it was basically, the way it worked is that they got their media releases and they put them straight into Living in Brisbane. And so, you know, people like David Hinchcliffe were being quoted, Maureen Hayes was being quoted, John Campbell was being quoted, in addition to Lord Mayor Jim Sawley. And so, they politicised the entire document and turned it into basically a Labor Party media release. That is what happened. And we're happy to provide the copies of these Living in Brisbane newsletters to show that that was the reality. But really, you know, I guess they could argue, Mister Chair, that, oh, look, that was in the past, that was someone else who did that. The only person who was around at that time was Steve Griffiths. But they could easily argue, oh, look, we've changed our mind now, we will do things differently. But if they really want to make that argument, then they can start by cancelling their own ward newsletters. Lead by example. And if you really think that newsletters are so irrelevant and unimportant to your constituents, cancel their own newsletters, Mister Chair. Don't send out a ward newsletter. You can do that. And you can put the money towards homelessness. You're welcome to do that. If they were genuine, that's what they would do. But they're not genuine. They simply want to make a political point. And it's also interesting to point out the difference between when councillor Adams moved a motion and the way they reacted to that and carried on about this being political. When all councillor Adams was doing was asking for the state government to remove valuation charges when they don't do a valuation. Nothing political about that. No mention of parties, no mention of even Labor state government, nothing like that. It was simply a request to not charge if evaluation is not being done. Nothing party political about that whatsoever. Whereas if you hear Labor councillors talking about Living in Brisbane, they say the LNP is sending out Living in Brisbane. No, the LNP is not sending out Living in Brisbane. Brisbane City Council is sending out Living in Brisbane. It is a non-political document. There are no party politics in it. And it simply provides useful information to people about what their elected council and the organisation is doing on their behalf. No quotes, no quotes from civic cabinet chairs or other politicians in there. It's simply a very factual and informational document that the people of Brisbane in the main value very highly. And so, they have the opportunity to lead by example and cancel their own newsletters. We know they won't do that. But that is simply the gauntlet that I would lay down for them. If they, if they really want us to believe they are genuine, cancel your own ward newsletter, put the money towards homelessness, and then we can talk. Then we can talk. Okay, as I always do, I just wanted to update you on the lighting up of council assets going forward. And also last night, last night, the Story Bridge was lit up in orange to support the SES Week. And this entire week provides us with the opportunity to thank and acknowledge the work that our SES does for local residents in the Brisbane and Queensland community. Obviously, council does a lot to work with and support SES. They are fantastic volunteers. And we absolutely take our hat off for the work that they do. So critical at the best of times, but also importantly, at the worst of times, when we really need them. And what am I seeing over there?
On your behalf, Lord Mayor, when I attended the reception on Friday night, they presented us, Brisbane City Council, with an award because of the outstanding work that we did.
Oh, okay.
I'll talk about it in general business.
That's very nice. But they deserve the full credit. They deserve the full credit and we'll continue to support them. Tonight, City Hall, Sandgate Town Hall and the Story Bridge will be lit up in yellow to support Children's Cancer Awareness Month. The Children's Cancer Foundation works to improve the lives of those families going through the grief of children's cancer as well as funding childhood cancer research. Tomorrow night, the Story Bridge will be lit up in magenta to support 2023 World Sepsis Day. Unfortunately, sepsis is the final stage of an infectious disease which ultimately leads to death. World Sepsis Day is marked on the 13th of September every year. On Thursday night, the Sandgate Town Hall and City Hall will be lit up in green to support Myotonic Dystrophy Day, which is the most common form of adult muscular dystrophy in a wider group of more than 75 genetically inherited neuromuscular conditions. On Friday night, the Story Bridge will be lit up in green for World Lymphoma Awareness Day. And this day helps raise awareness and starts conversations and raise money about lymphoma signs and symptoms. This Saturday is Mexico's National Day. And to mark this occasion, the Sandgate Town Hall and City Hall will be lit up in green, white and red to celebrate. This is a day that's celebrated on the 16th of September every year. And we wish our local Mexican community, and I'm not talking about New South Welsh men and women, I'm talking about those from the nation of Mexico, we wish them all the best for that national day. We continue to gear up to prepare for the upcoming storm and summer season and also the preparation for bushfire as well. We are more prepared this year than we have been in many, many years. And obviously, we hope that nothing will come to pass when it comes to bushfires this season. But we are certainly doing everything that we possibly can to get ready. We know that the conditions continue to dry out. We see the evidence of that in other places as well. So we continue to do everything we possibly can to be ready. There have been more than 342 hectares treated through planned burns. There's also been 3,158 hectares of fire break grass cutting completed in recent times to make sure that fire breaks are in place and well maintained. There's also been a whole range of fire track and trail maintenance completed. And in fact, 131 kilometres of fire tracks and trails have been prepared just recently. Last week, three kilometres of track and trail maintenance was completed in Mount Cootha, Mount Cravat, Capelabar Road Park, Carrawatha Forest and Tuie Forest. And that is just in the last, the last seven days. In addition to this, 14 hectares of vegetation works were completed across six conservation reserves, including the control of weeds, clean-up of overgrown grass, as well as revegetation of degraded areas. Next week, there will be 10 hectares of vegetation works to be completed, as well as 7.5 kilometres of track and trail maintenance. So the work is ongoing. We have, I think, in the main missed the opportunity to do more controlled burning because the conditions are now a bit too dry and not enough humidity for that. Obviously, if there's a day where we can, we will do it. We stand ready to do it. But the conditions are now looking increasingly like not ideal for controlled burning. And so, obviously, as we do each year, we've always got a program ready to go on the right days and we get as much controlled burning done as possible, given the safe conditions. The alternative is to do it in an unsafe manner, where the weather conditions are not right. And that potentially then risks fires getting out of control, which is not something we would ever want to see or be responsible for. In June this year, we were sad to learn that Lee Schwinn Singh, A O, and his wife Mary McKendry announced their retirement from the Queensland Ballet. And that's happening towards the end of this year. And so, both will stand down. The main, the main issue there for both of them have been some health-related challenges. And...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension. Seconded.
We have a motion for extension moved by councillor Adams, seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. And thank you to the chamber. And so, after 11 years of service, both of them, 11 years of service from both of them, to the Queensland Ballet, they are standing down at the end of this year. And what they have achieved and what the ballet has achieved under their leadership has been truly remarkable. What we have now is a truly world-class ballet company based here in Brisbane and in Queensland, which is now the envy of ballet companies around the world. They have built an incredible ensemble of dancers. They've created a world-class academy at Kelvin Grove State College. They've delivered the state-of-the-art Thomas Dixon Centre in West End. And they've also fostered a culture of giving through new corporate and philanthropy partnerships that have helped set the ballet up for future years. And so, they've done a remarkable job in the past 11 years. It will stand Queensland Ballet in such a strong position going forward. And as you would have read in the Courier-Mall today, I'll be making a presentation on behalf of council of the keys to the city as a result of that remarkable achievement. They have truly helped transform the city for the better in many ways. And we will acknowledge that coming up very soon. Mister Chair, item A, the presentation and tabling of the audited consolidated financial statements in the auditor general's report for the year 30th of June 2023. I'd like to table some documents. I'm tabling the consolidated financial statements in the auditor general's report for the year ending 30th of June, current year financial sustainability statement and the auditor general's audit report for the year ending 30th of June. And the long-term financial sustainability statement prepared as of the 30th of June 2023, as well as the 2023 Queensland Audit Office Final Management Letter. This is obviously something we do every year. I want to thank the council officers, many council officers, who have worked so hard to get all of the statements prepared. They've worked on the ongoing financial management across council and all of the reporting requirements, all of the audit requirements. It is an incredible job. It takes a lot of effort. And unlike a number of councils, we do strive very hard each year to get our, all of our reports done in a timely manner. And whereas, you know, there are a number of councils across the state who are repeatedly called up for having their statements in late or not complying with the requirements. Our statements are always on time. They are always done to the highest standard. And we pride ourselves in that responsible financial management. We also thank Queensland Audit Office and we thank our independent audit committee for the work they've done in contributing towards the outcome. Item B is the contracts and tendering report of contracts for July 2023. There's a total spend of over $119 million for local suppliers in this report, including multiple park upgrades, including Middle Park, Kedron and Everton Park. The next packages of the voluntary home buyback scheme are included, as well as the supply of new smart vision cameras for our buses and bus drivers. These cameras are really genuinely smart technology that help in a number of ways. They provide enhanced visibility, particularly during difficult conditions like heavy rain and storms or war driving at night. This is effectively retrofitting to our buses some of the technology that's available on the most modern cars, where the cars and vehicles these days have some smart technology to help you drive safely. And we're retrofitting that technology onto our buses to assist our drivers and, of course, improve passenger experience and safety as well. Item C is the Brisbane City Council Annual Report 2022/2023. This report, which we bring through at this time each year, shows the remarkable amount that has been achieved in the last 12 months for the people of Brisbane. Most importantly, though, it shows that we are investing more than ever in the vital things that matter. In infrastructure, in upgrading parks, in providing green space, in communities, in sporting facilities, in all of the important things to the Brisbane community, we are investing more than ever before and delivering incredible results. And in fact, you will struggle to find too many other years where we have delivered more than what is being delivered right now. The investment is at record levels across so many areas. And these are not easy times either. These have been incredibly challenging times for so many reasons. Starting off with the global pandemic, then moving into a costly and devastating flood, and then facing a global inflation crisis, a skill shortage, a housing shortage, and so many other challenges. These have been challenging times. And that's exactly why I think it's important that there are steady hands at the wheel, steady hands that continue to invest in the things that matter and deliver on council's commitments to the people of Brisbane. This report, obviously very detailed in a whole range of areas, covers all of the things that are being achieved and also meets important disclosure requirements, which we are always happy to do, to show where legislative requirements are being met, disclosure requirements are being met to the highest standard. And once again, I thank the officers for providing this report in such a timely and efficient manner as well. Once again, like the financial statements, there are significant timeframes to be met here that we have an expectation of. And they always rise to the occasion and provide this reporting to the highest standard. And we thank them for that. Item D is the Proposed Permitted Advertising Devices Design and Assessment Rule, a mouthful. The current advertising devices rule will be revoked and replaced with the Proposed Permitted Advertising Devices Designation. The amendments introduced in the proposed designation will also be made to the Advertising Devices Design and Assessment Rule. This has obviously come through council before in an earlier version. We then went out to community consultation, which has now been conducted and completed. We undertook public consultation in accordance with section 10 and 57 of the Advertising Devices Local Law from the 12th of July 2023 until the 9th of August 2023. Only one submission was received during this time. The new local law has a clear and sensible guidelines when it comes to managing signs in our city. There are changes that have been made, both through the former version that has come through council and this one, consistent with that former version relating to a range of different signs, including the display of election signs on private property. And so, councillors are familiar with what has been proposed here. And this is bringing that process to a conclusion so that the local law can be in place for the next council election. One thing I did want to point out here is that at the last election, the LNP administration, this administration, made the commitment that we would not use single-use plastic wrap on election booths. And we kept that commitment and we didn't use that wrap. And as far as I could tell, the Labor Party didn't use that wrap either. And the only people to use single-use wrap were the Greens, believe it or not. They were quite happy to use a whole lot of single-use plastic wrap. And so, it was disappointing. We've now made it not possible for them to do so. We will continue, obviously, not using that single-use plastic wrap on elections. We will continue obviously not using that single-use plastic wrap on elections and we now have required that anyone standing for a local government election will not be able to use plastic wrap on election day. Obviously, there's, you know, kilometres of plastic wrap produced for elections that is used for literally a matter of hours and then goes sadly often into landfill. So we've stopped that at the council level. Obviously, the other two levels of government will have to make their own choices on what they do. Our rule and regulation requires council elections not to use, for council elections not to use that. I think that's a positive thing. Item E is the amendment to the S C P, or Significant Contracting Plans for the Design and Construction of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge and the Mogul Road Corridor Upgrade Program, not Project. These contract changes are a result of the ongoing pressure that major projects are experiencing and we're being very upfront in bringing this through for councillors and dealing with this in a very transparent manner and that is happening-
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, seconded.
We have a move, we have a motion for extension moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, you have a further 10 minutes.
Thank you. And that is happening because of the construction cost pressures that we know are very real, whether it's the fact that reinforced steel is up by 43%, timber is up by 41%, diesel is up by 37%, machinery and transport equipment is up by 8%, concrete is up by 30%, sand is up by 60% and labour costs are up by 35%. These are factors that we cannot control and do not control. And so, you know, I predict, you know, in an unimaginative way that opposition councillors will carry on and somehow indicate or try to illustrate that where we should be immune to these pressures when other levels of government aren't. And that it is perfectly okay for Cross River Rail to blow out massively, for train construction to blow out massively, for virtually every single state government major project to blow out massively. That's okay, that's all explainable, but somehow we should be immune to all of those pressures. The reality is we are not immune and we are facing the same pressures that other levels of government and businesses are facing. These pressures are not limited to council, they are not limited to Brisbane, they are not even limited to Queensland, they are not even limited to Australia. They are pressures that all levels of government of all colours are facing, they are pressures that business are facing, they are pressures that households are facing as well. And anyone trying to build a house or do a renovation or even just get a tradesperson in to do something is facing these real pressures right now. And so what we have done here is we've made two important contract modifications. First of all, with the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, we have locked in because we have negotiated an outcome with the contractor for a guaranteed maximum price. Now, the contract that was originally signed was a cost-plus contract effectively, which meant that if those things that are beyond our control and beyond the contractor's control rise, then we obviously have to pay those costs. So if timber and steel and concrete goes up, then the contract will cost more. Given what's happened in recent times, we think it's a very sensible outcome here to lock in a guaranteed maximum price. This guaranteed maximum price means that we can have some certainty going forward that Kangaroo Point Bridge will be delivered for $299 million as a result of this contract and that gives some certainty going forward. This is a complex job. This is a job that the contractor has been working really hard to deliver and we've now passed the halfway mark of the project. But we know that locking in this guaranteed maximum price is the prudent thing to do given what's been happening with costs to this point in time. Mogul Road contract is a different story. It is facing the same cost pressures, but at this point in time, we haven't been able to lock in a guaranteed maximum price. That is not something that has been put on the table by the contractor at this point in time. And so the figures that will appear in the public documentation have been made commercial in confidence. They are available for councillors to see, but from a public point of view, they're not being published. Why is that? To protect the interests of the ratepayers of Brisbane. Because in the end, every contract that we sign, every project that we deliver has a certain amount of contingency. It is not prudent to let the contractor know what our contingency is. I think you can all see the logic behind that. And so in this case, it is in the best interests of ratepayers to not reveal how much contingency and how much budget has been allocated specifically for this project, although I can say, as we always do, once the project has been finalized and completed, we always release the cost publicly. Or once a guaranteed maximum price has been set, we release that price publicly. And that's why today we're releasing a price for the Kangaroo Point Bridge, but not for the Mogul Road Corridor Upgrade, because they are two different types of contracts. We can now release the Kangaroo Point Bridge figure. We will in the future release the Mogul Road figure. But having said that, I would say that it is consistent with the figures that have been publicly stated in the media. And so those figures that have been publicly stated, our budget is consistent with that, but we're not telling the contractor exactly how much contingency we have allocated for obvious reasons. This project has experienced challenges, not only with the cost of materials, labour, but also with the complexity of underground service relocation, known as public utility or P U P realignment. There's been an incredible amount of work below the surface. Councillor Wines has spoken about this at length in the chamber and so relocating pipes and wires, moving services, relocating drainage, incredible amount of work that has to be done under the ground before even the at-surface works can occur. That has been more timely or more time-consuming and costly than we would have liked, but it is essential to make sure we deliver this project. This project will take longer than we expected and so we can confirm that it will be delivered towards the end of next year. But in terms of an exact date, we're not in a position to reveal. Once again, this is a matter for commercial negotiations between us and the contractor, but certainly as soon as we are in a position to confirm dates and figures, we will do so. It's just not prudent for the ratepayers that we do that right now. So we'll continue pushing ahead with these two important projects. The Kangaroo Point Bridge is genuinely going to be a fantastic active travel infrastructure asset for the city, transformative. This is the type of asset that should be provided in a city that wants to help provide alternatives to car transport and to encourage public and active transport. It is something that is much anticipated by the people of Brisbane. I would also say that we have capped our contribution to green bridges at $550 million. And so while individual projects have experienced cost pressures, overall, the program that will be funded by council will remain $550 million. That's what we promised. We promised that we would invest no more than $550 million and that if more was to be delivered, it would require funding from other levels of government. We have received some funding and in fact, $61 million is being provided by the federal government towards Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. We will continue to seek more funding for other bridge assets, but our contribution remains capped at $550 million. And so the overall program is capped at that level and we remain committed to ensuring that as much is delivered as possible in that program. When it comes to Mogul Road Corridor Upgrade, you know, this is a project that is really important for the western suburbs of Brisbane. It is a big and complicated project. It is in fact the biggest road project being undertaken in Brisbane at the moment. We're not afraid of the big road projects. We're not afraid of the big projects, they have to be done. And one thing's for certain, that they never get cheaper if you don't do them. And if you don't, the solutions down the track are always much, much more expensive, much, much more disruptive, much, much more complicated. And we've seen that example played out time and time again. You'll remember when Labour councillors opposed the upgrade of Kingsley Smith Drive. And can you imagine if that project hadn't been done? Can you imagine? The cost of doing it now, the disruption of doing it now and we'd be racing to get it done before the Olympic Village was built, yet we had the foresight and determination to get on and do it. We did it despite the criticism from Labour councillors and it was the right thing to do. It's been a good outcome, not only from a motorist's point of view, but particularly from a active travel point of view and also will enable us to deliver better bus services such as the Gold City Glider, once the state government agrees to that in that precinct. It will enable the continued provision of housing in Hamilton North Shore. That wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for the road and infrastructure upgrade. And the same thing happens when it comes to the Mogul Road Corridor Upgrade. That is essential infrastructure for a large number of people in the western suburbs of Brisbane. And, you know, while it is definitely a project that is causing some disruption and frustration, I acknowledge at this point in time, it will be a great outcome when it's finished and one that we will look back at and think-
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
The right thing to do.
Move for an extension, seconded.
We have a motion for extension moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
I know that in hindsight, the Mogul Road Corridor project will be looked at by the community as the right thing to do and the right investment to make. And it certainly wouldn't be a project that would get cheaper if it was delayed. It would only get more expensive and more complicated. Item F is the, item F is the amendment of council standing committee meeting dates. And this relates to the advice that we've been provided by L G A Q, who have been advised by the Electoral Commission, that the caretaker period for the next election will commence on Monday 29th of January next year. And so this, based on that advice, is an amendment to the sitting schedule. We are not permitted to make decisions during the caretaker period. So that is the reality of the situation. We are prevented by the state government from making decisions during caretaker period. And so, I don't know, some councillors might just like to come in the meeting and have a chat generally, a bit of general business, I don't know, but we can't actually make any decisions. So it is obviously not the case that a normal meeting could be held during, during the caretaker period. There would be no E N C reports, there would be no committee reports, there would just be general business. And like I said, as much as some councillors love the sound of their own voice, that's a pretty pointless exercise to meet when you can't actually make any decisions. I for one, I'm in this role to make decisions in the interest of the people of Brisbane, not to hear the sound of my own voice, not to talk, but to make decisions. And that is what we've all been elected to do. We cannot do that during the caretaker period, so we've amended the schedule of sitting accordingly. I think that's covered all of the different items. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speak, Bob.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Hutton.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
We have a motion for afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes moved by councillor Hutton, seconded by councillor Mackay. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. See you in 15. Councillor, further speakers to E N C. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. At the outset, could I ask that items A and E be taken together for voting, items B and D taken together for voting, and items C and F taken together for voting?
Noted. Can I repeat that back, please?
Thanks.
Items A and E for voting, items B and D for voting, and items C and F for voting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Chair. I would like to speak on all of these items before us today and start with clause A, I'll go alphabetically, which is the presentation entailing the audited consolidated financial statements and the auditor general's report. And these statements that we've been given today are quite illuminating. If you look for an example of the LMP just giving up after 20 long years in power, this is it. So two weeks ago, we had to sit through lectures from the LMP backbench over there saying how the council budget was just like a household budget. That's what the LMP were trying to say two weeks ago. And this set of numbers confirms what I thought and said then that if the LMP administration in Brisbane were running a household budget like this, we would all be broke and homeless. What household, what household gets to go to a bank and says that they'd like a $550 million line of credit in perpetuity, a credit card of $550 million with no intention of ever paying it back? And on top of that, a $250 million variable loan facility? And this is, we must remember, all just to keep the lights on. These aren't, these aren't loans and credit facilities to build projects out in the suburbs of Brisbane or to deliver services. These are just to fund the normal operations of council. That doesn't sound like good household finance to me when you're relying on a credit card to simply keep the lights on, keep the doors open and keep the operations of council running. And the LMP have confirmed this and they've confirmed it in a number of ways and one of those is the fact they've run cash down now. So cash, cash reserves last year were $529 million, that was the 2022 figure. They're down to $71 million this year and that's going to be a permanent feature going forward because the LMP in Brisbane have decided that instead of using their own money, and I say that very loosely, but instead of council using cash reserves levied from ratepayers to deliver services, they've spent all of that and they've gone and got a $550 million credit card just to run the normal operations of council. So I don't think there would be too many households that would, in Brisbane, that would agree that you get a credit card as your rainy day option and your only option. You know, we hear the Lord Mayor talk a lot about having a, you know, running a surplus budget and being able to fund things every now and again because apparently he's a good financial manager. But we find out here that the LMP have spent all of the cash in the bank and they've gone and got a massive credit card just to keep the lights on. And this isn't, as I said, for infrastructure, which we'll get to shortly. It's not about city shaping projects. This is just for normal operational purposes. Quite incredible when the LMP claim that they're the good economic managers, isn't it? Amazing to see that. And on top of this $550 million credit card and this $250 million variable rate loan that the LMP have taken out, now, this is in addition to debt climbing as well. Another $350 million this year on top of that, taking Brisbane's debt, which is lumped on future generations of Brisbane residents, going from $2.6 billion last year to $3 billion this year. And what do the people of Brisbane have to show for it? The blowout on the metro, the blowout on the bridge, the blowout on Victoria Park and the blowout on all those projects that this Lord Mayor has overseen on Kingsley Smith Drive, on Beams Road and all of those projects that have led to this point. So the LMP aren't good money managers, that's clear in these papers, and they're also not good at managing projects. And the level of carryovers that are in these audited, audited reports and the delays to projects tell us that as well. And numbers don't lie, numbers don't lie. There's a $450 million surplus across all program areas. That means that there was $450 million more in revenue in all of those budgeted program areas than there was in expenditure, in accounting terms. That's, that's what's accounted for in there. There's $450 million that was brought in in revenue and not spent in the last financial year. So that means that that ratepayers' money that's being taken in from ratepayers each and every year is not being spent in that same year out in the suburbs of Brisbane. And you can understand there are projects that go over long periods of time. We know that the Brisbane Metro Bus Project is one of those. That's gone from 2016, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25. That's a very, 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 very- That's a very, 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 very long project. So we get that. That one is funded through debt and borrowing, we get that. But the projects that we're seeing here, this surplus in rates revenue coming in and not being spent, are the basics in the suburbs. There's $450 million of basic ongoing work in the suburbs that is not being delivered by this LMP administration. You'd think in receiving $200 million over the last two years in subsidies for the waste levy from the Queensland Government, that this LMP administration may have fast-tracked a full organic recycling system or FOGO. They're dragged kicking and screaming and claiming all of these crazy things are going to happen if a FOGO system was introduced in Brisbane. They never mentioned they were getting $200 million from the Queensland Government in advance payments over the last 200 years to ensure that our city is prepared for the future. No, but the lazy, tired, old LMP don't worry about the future. You just have to ask those bus manufacturers down at Eagle Farm what they know the LMP's view about the future is, about the future of manufacturing, the future of bus services. The LMP have a pretty bad track record when it comes to that. Another $110 million was raked in in profits from people's water bills last year in Brisbane. I remember a few years ago, the LMP used to offer a pensioner water remission on their water bills. They ripped that away a couple of years ago, the LMP. And the reason the LMP gave at the time was the council no longer delivered those services, so it wasn't their problem. That's the answer familiar. The LMP saying something is not their problem. They never explained, though, to those pensioners that they were taking $110 million profit from them. How callous can the LMP be targeting pensioners? Pensioners on fixed incomes. It's absolutely incredible. And the LMP treat all of this, and we hear that from them all the time, and they get up and do their little lectures about accounting standards and numbers on a spreadsheet. They treat all of this as simply as that, as a spreadsheet, as numbers on there. But none of that matters in the real world to people who live out in the suburbs of Brisbane that we represent. It does for the people out in those suburbs. It matters to them when they have to pick up the tab for all of these political decisions, because none of these, you know, there could be up to 27 rate payers in here, sure, but it's not up to us to pick up the tab for the political decisions of this LMP administration. It's all of those people, those 1.3 million people out there living in the suburbs of Brisbane. So we have a fundamentally different approach when it comes to the return on rates levied on the people of Brisbane here than the LMP. But if we were to consider, if we were to consider this just in accounting terms and look at the report card that's included in these papers here for the LMP, we should consider this. There are three key measures that are included here in these papers about financial sustainability. They're included in the annual report and they're included in the attachment here. Those three key measures of financial sustainability for council. How council under this LMP is managing the money of the rate payers of Brisbane? The first one of those is an operating surplus ratio. Does council have enough money to operate on a daily basis? Can they keep the lights on? That's a fail. They have failed on the first measure of financial sustainability. The next one is an asset sustainability ratio. Can council continue to replace or renew assets versus the cost of depreciating them over time? Now, we have a measure here from the Queensland Audit Office that it should be greater than 90%. That's a big fail as well on the LMP. It's currently at 66%, and will drop to 52%, to as low as 52% in the forward years. So they've failed on the first two out of the three key financial sustainability measures that councils must meet. So I'm sure they must have met the third, right? Well, I don't think so. The net financial liabilities ratio, which describes whether rate payers can afford the debt that the LMP have incurred, this ratio should not exceed 60%. That it's 152%. So that is a third fail for the LMP. So there's three key measures of financial sustainability that this council should meet in being responsible, in being responsible in managing the billions and billions of dollars of expenditure on behalf of the rate payers of Brisbane. Three key measures, and they've failed in every single one of them.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order, Chair. Move for an extension. Seconded.
We have a motion for extension moved by councillor Colley and seconded by councillor Whitme. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So I know the LMP, I'm not sure councillor Cunningham will get up next and say, but the Queensland Audit Office ticked off on all of this. And they'll say that, and of course, it's signed off here. But what they won't tell the rate payers of Brisbane, what they won't say to the people of Brisbane in getting this tick off, is that's because the Audit Office knows that Brisbane has a large and diverse rate space. And I suspect I know why the LMP wanted to talk about rates earlier in the context of it being someone else's problem and not their own problem, is because the Queensland Audit Office has identified that to bring these ratios further under control, this LMP administration will be locking in massive rates increases over the forward years, not to plan for the future growth of Brisbane, not to deliver the infrastructure that will change our city and make it more accessible and equitable to get around, less dependent on car travel, and more investment in public and active transport, none of those things. They're going to have to jack up rates just to get these financial ratios under control because of the political decisions they have been making over the last 20 long years. It's code for rates will be higher under the LMP. They will jack up rates for as long as they stay in power, because they will have to. They have locked it in. Moving on to clause B, which is the contracts and tendering report for council here today. The purpose of contracts and tendering reports is, of course, to show us how the delegates of council are carrying out the strategic direction of council, well, in this case, the LMP administration. Sometimes we hear the Lord Mayor getting at arm's length of these decisions, saying they're nothing to do with him. When he likes, when he thinks it's politically expedient to claim some of them, he will as well. The single biggest item that's in the contracts and tendering before us today is the contracting out of jobs. Not just by a few million dollars, but by a few hundred million dollars. Not talking about a few million dollars for specific projects the council has engaged a contractor to deliver, we're talking about the wholesale contracting out of council's workforce, ongoing, basic, fundamental council work being contracted out to the private sector, to the tune of $450 million. Now, we'll hear from the LMP words like value for money when they contract out jobs, but is it really? That's the question. They're addicted to contracting out, so I guess they have to find an excuse when it comes up, and their excuse often is that it's value for money. But from recent experiences, we know, whether it's been in engineering and design services done in-house, they're cheaper than contracting out to the private sector, more flexible and more reliable. We know that our parks are better maintained when it's done by a team of dedicated staff in council who work within council, take great pride in their work, than a contractor simply running staff by the hour and trying to make as big a profit as they possibly can out of public services. Just look at the council team that maintains the Sangate Fourshore Park in Sangate. Absolutely amazing, done in-house by a council team. But the LMP do not value the dignity of a permanent job. That's before us. They can say all they want, but to see an item today to the tune of $450 million contracting out basic work, the LMP have spoken loud and clear. They do not see value in a workforce that is dedicated to serve the people of Brisbane. Well, Labour does, and Labour will do things very differently in administration. Item C is the Brisbane City Council Annual Report. And this is an important report card at this point of the election cycle, of course, the last one before we go to the polls in March next year. Brisbane is a city of suburbs, is in the grips of a congestion crisis and 20 years of LMP mismanagement of major projects, and habitual underinvestment in the suburbs is laid bare in this annual report before us today, Chair. Despite the greenwashing upfront, not only do they do it in words, but they're doing it in colours these days as well, and all the talk of a sustainable city, the LMP have locked Brisbane into a car-centric future and decades of congestion if they continue to keep doing the same tired old thing, which is what they are proposing to do into the future. The patronage figures for public transport from a decade ago help illuminate this problem that Brisbane now has after 20 years of LMP rule. Bus patronage was around 78 million passengers in 2014, which represented at the time, Chair, a growth of 66% from the decade prior. So that was a good result, good on the LMP of 2014 in achieving that. Well, today's bus patronage figures of just 64 million passengers represents an 18% decline over the last decade. While we have seen exponential population growth in that same period, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out why Brisbane is in the grips of a congestion crisis. Ferry and city cat patronage is even more dire. There were 6.2 million passengers 10 years ago, that's slumped now to 2.7 million passengers. And you can't blame floods for this one, because in the year of the 2011 floods, in that same year that those floods occurred, patronage was almost double what it is today. This represents a 57% decline in patronage on our river. The LMP of offshore bus building, they're selling our buses this year, they've sold off our publicly owned ferries, and now they're planning to slash suburban bus routes. This is a recipe for disaster. If we thought it was bad enough getting to this point, imagine what it would be like if the LMP were re-elected in March next year. It seems the only plan for travel that the LMP have, of course, over the last year, was overseas travel, to the tune of $350,000 being spent on overseas trips. Councillors Murphy, Davis, Adams, and the Lord Mayor were flying high while Brisbane was stuck in gridlock. The story on housing and homelessness, Chair, isn't much better either. Despite the annual report claiming that $3 million was provided through the pathways out of homelessness grant, it was in fact just $1 million. The budget and the disclosures in the back of the annual report confirm that. Maybe it's a typo, or maybe it was deliberate to make it look like the LMP were doing more than they are. We know that it is really very, very little in this space. And let's not forget, as we heard earlier today, the LMP spends more on their Living in Brisbane newsletter than on the pathways out of homelessness program each and every year. And we found out today, in the answers to questions on notice, that council employs just four public space liaison officers and two community development coordinators who are out there on the front line, working with the community every day of the week, every night of the week as well, and doing amazing, amazing work. And to know that there are more media advisers in the Lord Mayor's office than public space liaison officers in the middle of a housing and homelessness crisis is absolutely galling. There are five staff in the Lord Mayor's office who are media advisers, and in Brisbane, covering 190 suburbs, in the midst of the worst housing and homelessness crisis we have ever had, this LMP administration only funds four homelessness offices. If that doesn't tell you everything you need to know about the priorities of this LMP Lord Mayor and his LMP administration, then nothing will. I can't believe that all those LMP councils would simply accept that as good enough. Can you? So the LMP ran up the white flag recently, and they admitted that everything they had done to help deliver housing had failed. We see that in the numbers. We saw that released by the Lord Mayor a couple of weeks ago, despite saying that it was the Labor councillors, the Green councillor, and the independent councillors' fault, everyone else's fault, but apparently, over the last few months, it's our fault that new houses aren't being delivered, despite the Lord Mayor having 20 out of 27 councillors in this chamber, apparently claiming that we have stopped all development in Brisbane. You know, he's getting desperate, that's his jumping the shark moment there. But in the annual report, we see that in the numbers as well. Just 3,700 development applications and 3,300 referral agency requests, building works, so 3,300 buildings under construction this year, when we saw 35,000 people moving to Brisbane. The LMP have been painfully slow to move on support for the original and the best developers of build-to-rent schemes, community housing providers. It's amazing to think that the Lord Mayor and the planning chair and the deputy mayor have only just discovered build-to-rent in the last couple of months. Do you know who's been doing build-to-rent developments for the last 20 years? Community housing providers. And one that was set up by the Labor Council and the Labor State Government, Brisbane Housing Company, have been trying to do more and more of that around Brisbane, but it was stymied by this LMP council.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order, Chair. Move for an extension. Seconded.
We have a motion for extension moved by councillor Colley and seconded by councillor Whitme. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. You have the call.
Thanks very much, Chair. So a few months ago, the planning chair got up and declared that the LMP was doing everything they possibly could to help the community housing sector. Yet, meeting after meeting, the Lord Mayor and the planning chair got up and said that the LMP couldn't possibly do any more than they were. They reckon that everything they've been doing over the last few years was the maximum amount of support that was possible. Turns out, that was true, except for all of the things that Labor was raising at the time in terms of support. And they've finally come on board to our suggestion for infrastructure charge discounts. And that's a good thing. We support that. But the community housing sector needs more support, more support from every level of government, and very glad, very glad to see the Housing Australia Future Fund will now pass the federal parliament, which will see 30,000 new social and affordable houses built over the next short period, which will...
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order.
Relevance, some of this is, I can't find any of it in the reports.
I'm going to let councillor Cassidy continue. We do have a broad spectrum of items on the agenda, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. So every level of government needs to pull their weight, and I am very glad to see that the federal government's plan will be passing. The state government is increasing that support, and so they should as well. But we need to see the largest council in Australia pulling their weight as well. We can't have this situation where the LMP claim for years that they're doing enough, and then it takes them to be dragged kicking and screaming to do just a little bit more, which makes a huge difference, a huge difference to the delivery of community housing here in Brisbane. There's much more, much more to be done, but it's a good first step. So also for all the political grandstanding of the LMP around neighbourhood planning and the other planning changes that they brought to the council around the supply of new housing, and of course blaming everybody else for the issues of supply.
Point of order, Mr Chair. He really, really is a long way from any of these items.
The annual...
Yeah, look, I do think, you know, at the end of the day, this is, he's truly going a long way off what's in here.
Councillor Allen, the annual report is an encompass document of what is happening within council. I'm sorry, I can't uphold your point of order. Councillor Cassidy, please continue.
Thanks very much, Chair. So despite the LMP saying that they were doing everything they could by bringing planning scheme changes to council, neighbourhood plans to council, and delivering housing, we know that the only people to blame over the last few years for their inadequacies was them, was the LMP. It's like they forgot they were in charge for a while, and the way they've been acting over the last few months would suggest that they have forgotten about that as well. But they've, of course, scrapped all of that. There are no planning scheme changes being progressed anymore, no neighbourhood plans going forward. It's all planning changes through TLPIs and dots on a map for high-density residential. I guess it's a different approach. The LMP admitted, they've now admitted that everything they have done has made the problem worse. The LMP have now admitted that they have made the housing crisis worse. I guess it is a change of approach. Is it the right one? Well, the people of Brisbane will decide about that in March next year. The LMP's greenwashing knows no bounds in this report, as I mentioned earlier as well. It does forget, I mean, they use the word sustainability a lot, but it forgets to mention the political approach the LMP take to koala protection, of course, rather than listening to real experts. They just let councillor Mackay Google things and raise them in the council chamber as if that's the evidence that we all need to believe. They fail to mention that just 18% of the bushland levy goes to buying and protecting bushlands. It does mention the word offsets in it, but doesn't mention that the dodgy carbon credits that council uses as offsets for council emissions could be replaced by the own... that council uses as offsets for council emissions could be replaced by the own, the offsets that we create ourselves by rolling out a full FOGO system. We do see, however, in here, the LMP's obsession with the hundred and forty-one million dollar Victoria Park project at the expense of all other projects. We see a few hundred thousand dollars here and there for environmental programmes, but we know that under the LMP, hundreds of millions of dollars will be tied up in one single inner-city project for the next decade, just the next decade. They are so obsessed with making that project look good, that they're hosting all of the so-called environmental events at Victoria Park as well. They recently spent, the LMP recently spent six hundred thousand dollars on one single Green Heart Fair that was there that attracted eighteen thousand people. That's the single most expensive event council has ever hosted per person. Checks out that it was at Victoria Park, maybe because it's the single most expensive park project, every event they hold there is also the most expensive. I'm sure most of that was spent actually on advertising, because that's what we know, what the LMP is all about. Yeah, they're very, they're very good at that. People want to see value for money, they want to see the suburbs looked after, but it's clear through this that the LMP are really focused on themselves. And the final straw for the suburbs is the shocking underspend for suburban road projects. The blowouts on the Mogal Road and Beams Road project have seen delays at Mogal Road and cuts to the Beams Road project, and other smaller, yet significant projects are missing out. The community reached out to council eleven thousand times about traffic and congestion issues in the suburbs of Brisbane last year. Eleven thousand times council was contacted about suburban congestion and traffic issues. I'm sure that figure is consistently high over the years as well, getting worse obviously, but the LMP only constructed six suburban congestion busting projects at intersections in the suburbs last year. Eleven thousand times council was contacted about local traffic issues, and the LMP responded to just six of those. So the annual report tells you, I think, everything you need to know about this LMP administration's priorities, it's about themselves over the suburbs of Brisbane. Clause D, the Advertising Devices Designation and Proposed Amendment, Lord Mayor spoke earlier as if this is, this was the next step in the evolution of the advertising local law. It's not, in fact, it's another change to the law that they're bringing. It's not, this wasn't part of, I think he was trying to be a bit smart in saying that they, it's the next step and they went to consultation. But why does the LMP have to do this so often? Why do they change it every year? It's not, it's not a rolling, it's not a rolling sort of series of amendments happening to this, this local law that's happening on purpose. There seems to be, you know, stuff up after stuff up after stuff up. We have approached these amendments over the last few years, the many that have come, with an open mind, but the sheer number of changes that the LMP make do actually make it very confusing for people, particularly if you have consulted on a local law previously, run it through, and it's done and dusted, comes through councillors and in place, then run it through E and C and, I suppose, put an advertisement in the courier mail, don't tell anyone much about it, they didn't bring it to council to talk about, have one submission because someone stumbled across it. And you wonder why people get a bad, get a bad taste in their mouth when this LMP administration does things like this. We're all for political expression, of course, and want that protected, and want to allow scientists for referendum to be included, and that's very important as well. We also want to ensure that councillors aren't given the green light to exploit council resources for political gain. I've seen those big banners that the LMP put up with their faces all over them in local parks, and how about those koala signs that feature the LMP councillor and the LMP mayor more prominently than the message about protecting koalas. We've seen what depths the LMP will plumb when it comes to self-promotion. The LMP have botched this local law so many times, I just don't know, I just don't know that you can trust them with these amendments before us today, and if this really is the end of the line, maybe they bring it back in the next session to amend it again because they've stuffed it up, who knows? But it's just not a very good process, is it? Clause E, the source board submission for the Significant Contracting Plan, and this, this one's an interesting one, that the Lord Mayor had some strange, strange admissions about, I think, actually, we'll get to them. I like this. Good news, Kangaroo Point halfway, Kangaroo Point Bridge halfway finished, bad news, it's already a hundred million dollars over budget, that's in Queensland. The next one, Kangaroo Point Bridge Build Hits Halfway, a hundred million dollar cost overrun. I think that's important, that is important to, to get these things on the record, because what we have seen the Lord Mayor do in the past has been really quite loose with the truth, where he's claimed that an original budget for a project was somehow figment of everyone's imagination. They're trying to sort of, they're trying to say they've found a saving, for goodness' sake, on this bridge, when what we know is that not only, it's actually not a hundred million dollars, it's actually a hundred and nine million dollars blown out on this. Let that sink in a little bit. The Lord Mayor's signature bridge has blown out by a hundred and nine million dollars for just one single bridge. So what we know is that...
Sorry, councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order. I move for an extension.
Seconded.
We have a motion for extension moved by councillor Collier, seconded by councillor Whitme. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Thanks very much, Chair. So we remember the Lord Mayor promise on day one, when he was Lord Mayor back in April 2019, that when he was appointed Lord Mayor, he would build five bridges, five bridges for five hundred and fifty million dollars. To be fair, he later watered that down a bit and said that the five hundred and fifty million dollars was two-thirds of the funding required for five bridges. He did say that after the announcement, but he is on record as having said that some point after he was appointed and made that commitment for five bridges, for five hundred and fifty million. So how's that looking for the LMP now? Well, we've got four hundred million dollars to be spent on one bridge and one bike way extension, Kangaroo Point Bridge and the extension of Loris Bonney Bike Way over Breakfast Creek. So that leaves, Chair, a hundred and fifty million dollars to build the other three bridges that he promised. So imagine, imagine if the LMP didn't insist on a fancy restaurant being added to the Kangaroo Point Bridge, or land in the city, the CBD being bought for hundreds of thousands of dollars, out of that bridge budget to build a cafe at the end there. It's just absolutely incredible that the Lord Mayor has said that he also will still be seeking the two-thirds funding. I mean, he's forty million dollars short now on the two-thirds figure from other levels of government, but is still seeking hundreds of millions of dollars from other levels of government to help fund these bridges that he promised the people of Brisbane, and so far has been entirely unsuccessful in getting that. So I guess what we need the Lord Mayor to do is to be upfront with people and to say whether he is actually committed to building those five bridges, or four bridges if he's watering it down, or if he's not. If he's abandoning them and he's walking away from them, then the people of Brisbane should be told that. Because at the moment, there's a hundred and fifty million dollars left in the budget to build three more bridges as promised, even if it's two bridges, seventy-five million dollars a pop is not going to get much from St Lucia to West End or Tuong to West End. And then, and then you think about those poor residents in councillor Mackay's ward who have been living through hell on that Mogal Road project. I'm sure they probably won't be surprised to see that there's been a cost blowout, given they have seen how the project has rolled out. But I wonder if they'll be told about the delays to the project as well. The Lord Mayor has said he wouldn't release the figure for the blowout because he doesn't want the contractor to know how much is in the budget so they don't charge it all. That's the Lord Mayor's, if that's the Lord Mayor's rationale, and I'll take that interjection from councillor Johnston, it actually isn't a budget anymore, it's a cost estimate, I guess, but when you continue to increase like that, it's actually not a fixed budget in any way. I wonder why the LMP won't be upfront about the delays on this project, why keep that so secret? I'm sure, I presume that's, those delays are given to council by the contractor. I don't think council would be dictating to a contractor, you must delay the project by X amount of weeks. Maybe they have, maybe council's out of money, maybe council can't afford to pay those contract payments in regular instalments, so they're dragging it out by, who knows? Maybe weeks, maybe months, maybe years. I suspect I know why councillor Mackay and the Lord Mayor don't want to tell those people how much longer this project's going to take. There is an argument that the Lord Mayor can make, whether we accept that or not, about commercial unconfidence for financial figures, but there is no argument he can make about keeping the timeframe secret from the people of Brisbane, absolutely none. So the LMP, each and every week, Chair, the LMP are serving up another reason to show them the door in twenty-four, aren't they? This is stuff up after stuff up, delay after delay, rates up, services down, cost blowouts, delays, people paying more and getting less under this LMP administration. That's the LMP way here in Brisbane, people paying more and getting less. And finally, finally on that, the Lord Mayor said in his opening that the LMP aren't afraid to take on big projects. Well, I think the people of Brisbane should be very afraid about the LMP promising to take on big projects, given their appalling track record. We're now talking about the billions of dollars in cost blowouts, and the Lord Mayor has made a political argument that it's all outside of his control, it's all somebody else's fault. But when you dig down a little further and do a bit of, you know, a little trip down memory lane and remember how the Lord Mayor costed all these projects in the first place, the metro was just a thought bubble that was done on the back of an envelope, but figured just pulled from the air there was going to be a one point two billion dollar subway system, of course that was going to blow out, because that's very poorly planned. When you go out there and say, as the Lord Mayor said, he was going to build five bridges for five hundred and fifty million dollars, and then two days later had to say, oh, actually that's just three quarters of it, because somebody said there's no way you're going to build five bridges for five hundred and fifty million dollars, of course that was uncosted, unfunded and unplanned. So sure, there are external factors in all of this, but the root cause to all of the problems that we have in this budget is this Lord Mayor. Every single project that he's involved in is delayed, there are cost blowouts, because he simply does not plan for the future here in Brisbane. He plans for his next media conference, they plan for their next hit on the state government and hit on the federal government, but they really have no thought process going in to planning for the future of Brisbane. On the amendment to the council standing committee meeting dates, this is inevitable, we of course understand that due to the timing of the election next year, this is probably bound to happen, given it was brought forward two weeks, the council election next year. So there's just now seven council meetings before the next council election. It'll be a bittersweet time for so many LMP councillors, I suspect. Some are jumping ship, like councillor Hammond, others are going to go down with the ship as well, and there'll be a lot less LMP councillors in this chamber after the March sixteen election next year. I'll be glad, of course, Chair, to see a whole new group of community champions elected as Labor councillors joining us next year alongside a fresh new mayor, Tracy Price. I think what we've learnt over the last period is that twenty years of one administration is no good for Brisbane. It's far too long, this LMP administration's been in far too long, lost touch, they're out of ideas, they're costing people big time in the hip pocket. It certainly is time for change.
Thank you. Pardon me, thank you councillor Cassidy. Before we move on, councillor Johnson, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct earlier in the meeting. Your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting. Are there any further speakers?
Mr Chairman, you are a grub, and I dissent in your ruling.
Do we have a seconder? There is no seconder, don't uphold your point of order.
Mr Chairman, your actions today have demonstrated that you are a bully, like other LMP councillors. It has been inappropriate what you have done here to me today, it is wrong, and I'm putting it on the record that what you have said to me is completely inappropriate in this workplace, and you leave me with no recourse, other than to put it on the record, because your behaviour has been outrageous.
Councillor Johnson, I don't uphold your point of order. Are there further speakers?
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Allen.
Mr Chairman, the comments just made by councillor Johnston are quite derogatory to yourself as chairman of this council. It is unacceptable meeting conduct, and I seek your ruling on her behaviour and her most recent comments, please.
Councillor Allen, I have already reprimanded councillor Johnson, and we will continue the meeting, so I don't uphold your point of order. Are there any further speakers?
Point of order.
Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, just a procedural, seeking your advice. What are you reprimanding councillor Johnston for?
Councillor Johnson, in the earlier part of the meeting, went against the ruling made on the twenty-ninth of August at, against the use of the word liar in the meeting. It was made very clear that we were not going to use that word anymore. Are there any further speakers?
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I don't know at what point in councillor Johnston's, Johnston's contribution today she used the word liar.
It was in the outburst... Councillors, please! It was during the outburst, during the dissent motion. Further speakers?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Wines.
I kind of seek a ruling on the use of the word grub in calling other councillors that paymentless, please.
Councillor Wines, it would be an act of disorder, and as much as it does deserve those particular councillors using those words being ejected, this is the last meeting of the session, and I am not going to infringe on free speech.
Oh, he said mine.
Councillor Johnson, councillor Johnson, councillor Johnson, you're not going to interject, I am not kicking you out. As much as I know that's what you would love me to do, as much as I know that this is the last meeting, it's going to be a very long meeting, and you don't want to be here, you are most welcome to stay.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Further speakers, please.
Again, your remarks about my personal conduct and participation in this meeting are inappropriate. Of course I am here, of course I am contributing. It is inappropriate that you continue to make these personal comments...
Councillor Murphy, just one moment, councillor Johnson. Councillor Murphy, no. Absolutely not. Councillor Johnson.
It is inappropriate that you continue to make these personal comments about me that are not part of your responsibility as the Chair of Council, and it is wrong, and you are a grub for continuing to do it.
Councillors, stop, stop. The only person this is hurting is councillor Johnson, so we stop. Are there further speakers to E and C? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to speak on items A, very briefly, and item D, as well, on the local law, and I also want to mention very quickly item B, the contracts and tendering. So, very quickly, the item B, contracts and tendering, through you, Mr Chair, the leader of the opposition mentioned how, what a wonderful job the council officers in-house were doing with our parks and the maintenance of them, and can I say, I wholeheartedly agree with that statement. It's unfortunate that his deputy doesn't agree with that statement and was more than happy to get up on TV and lamb blast the officers for saying, and saying that they were doing a terrible job. So you kind of can't have it both ways. The item D, which was the Proposed Permitted Advertising Devices Designation and Proposed Amended Advertising Devices Design and Assessment Rule. So, Mr Chair, I rise to speak on this item, and this centre of council is committed to having clear and sensible guidelines when it comes to managing signs in our city. The Advertising Devices Local Law 2021 regulates advertising devices in Brisbane and is supported by the Advertising Devices Design and Assessment Rule and the Permitted Advertising Devices Rule. We also, this local law ensures advertising devices are located, designed and operated to minimise adverse impacts on the community and the environment. To achieve this, advertising devices are assessed by applying standards of urban design, amenity, sustainability, conservation, health and safety that are cost-effective and in the public interest. The proposed changes to signs on private properties and in green spaces are about having effective and appropriate rules. Council regularly conducts reviews of our local laws to ensure they are fit for purpose and responsive to our ever-changing environment. The proposed changes strike the delicate balance between upholding essential standards of public safety and respecting a person's right to freedom of expression. In accordance with section ten and fifty-seven of the local law, public consultation period ran from the twelfth of July to the ninth of August. Council does not propose to make any amendments to the proposed designation or proposed amended advertising device sign as a result of the one public... advertising device sign as a result of the one public submission that we received. And should this item have the support of the chambers till they have the commencement date, will be the thirteenth of September twenty twenty-three. We don't expect these changes will result in any noticeable difference during election periods. The other item I wanted to speak on briefly, which was item A, which was about the annual, the financials and the auditors' report. The reason I'm raising this one very briefly is because through you, Mister Chair, the leader of the opposition mentioned Fogo. So I just wanted to put something on the record about Fogo and the insistence that the leader of the opposition will roll this out to every single household across Brisbane. So I'm not sure if you're aware, but there was a council in Sydney just recently did exactly that. And can I read directly from the quotes? Anger is mounting over a Sydney council's decision to collect red bins, lid bins, once every two weeks, with one council admitting they hadn't consulted locals in the surrounding properties. So garbage bins in the Inner West Council are now being collected fortnightly and not weekly as part of changes to the council's waste strategy. So sanitary products, nappies and pet litter will remain in red bin items and which will be collected fortnightly. Families have raised concerns about the smell, rodents and potential overflowing bins as we head into a summer of sweltering temperatures. I make deliberate mention of that particular quote because it was also noted through you, Mister Chair, the opposition making some comments about how we were scaremongering people. Well, can I say, this is a council with thirty-five thousand residents, we're dealing with a council of over two million residents and to say that you're just going to roll out full Fogo without any consultation, without any proper planning, without any of the appropriate infrastructure is a nonsense. The other thing that I wanted to put on the record was this particular resident wrote and said, he criticised the council for having a one size fits all approach. We're still going to have to put everything in the existing red bin and it's just going to be picked up every two weeks. It's just going to be smelly and yucky and not going to give the outcome that we're looking for. He also mentioned that they found out about this via Facebook comments, which had sparked more than a hundred and fifty comments on this post. And in that thread, households lashed the decision as being out of touch and disastrous. While we need to support the environment and reduced waste, changes need to be carefully planned and implemented. The Inner West Council seems to largely just make their own decisions and ignore community feedback. I can tell you, Mister Chair, we do not ignore community feedback. We will be making sure this thing is very carefully planned and rolled out across our two point two million households. And I noticed that the councillor on the opposite side, through you, Mister Chair, is laughing at the idea of making these things carefully planned, but that's what we do as responsible.
Just one moment, please. Councillor Marks is speaking, councillor Massey and councillor Collier, correct me if I'm wrong, no more outbursts, please. Councillor Marks.
That's what we do on this side of the chamber, through you, Mister Chair. We roll out these programmes responsibly with very careful thought and very careful planning so that we know when the food is picked up from the residents, it's picked up in such a way that it doesn't impact on any amenity on anybody and it has somewhere to go other than just rotting in the bins. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you councillor Marks. Further speakers? Councillor Massey.
Thanks, Chair. I wish to speak on item C, D and I rise to speak on item C, D and F. Look, I'll begin with the annual report, understanding that this annual report plays a really important role in trying to demonstrate what the council is doing currently. But I just rise to speak on a couple of points in it. As we can see from the data and the conversations that we've had in the chamber over the past recent weeks, public transport has declined, public transport usage has declined dramatically. And this potentially is connected to the fact that there's a lack of knowledge about public transport usage within this chamber. From my understanding, only two councillors actually use public transport to come here on Tuesday? Yeah, you do, I think I do, through you, Chair. And this decrease in public transport can be expected during the Covid period, but when we have a liberal council that's constantly saying that public transport, public transport behaviour and getting people onto public transport is a priority, but we see that there is a decrease in public transport very clearly, we know that there's a disconnect there. And maybe a part of that disconnect is the fact that, bless you, maybe a part of that disconnect is a part of the fact of the many, 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 many petitions around public transport that are ignored or put aside or tabled by this council. And these petitions talk from residents saying, we need more frequency, we want routes to be extended, we want these dead spots or dead areas that we would like public transport for, to be put in process and for something to be done in it. And so it is to me, you know, a bit of, you know, with this report, it's, you know, and in our conversations, it's clear that that, there's saying one thing and then there's actually doing. And it is sad to see that public transport usage isn't getting to the numbers of pre-pandemic levels because clearly, without that increase in usage, what Brisbane will be is an absolute gridlock, right? And even, and I say this even as the council for the GABA that is in a city, and then we talk about the potential developments that will be happening all across Montague Road and the Kirilpa precinct and it will be gridlock. Already now, we have residents contact us about the sixty, taking thirty minutes to get to the city, right? There's reasons why people aren't using public transport and that's because we're not doing all the work that's needed to actually provide this and the behavioural change to it to happen. I'll talk briefly also about the drop of usage in ferries, especially since we know that the Cross River Ferry and the City Hopper Ferry are free. I mean, we have these free ferries, how is there not an increase in usage? Of course, free ferries create challenges for residents in areas, especially that have very little connectivity for ferry usage. You know, people down in Kangaroo Point from My Ward are often waiting for those city hoppers because they're being used for free. But when we have free ferries and we're saying that it's a tourist, because it is a tourism incentive, I would say, it shows again that we have to go back to the drawing board if we want our communities to change their behaviour and to change the practices that we have to try to get more people on public transport. There's a lot of greenwashing in here. We know that offsets do not mean a reduction in emissions. There's a point in the annual report that talks about at least a thirty percent decrease in emissions by twenty thirty-one, which I find curious, since over five years, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, Brisbane City Council has only reduced its emissions by seven percent. So that's not a lot. There's a lot of work to be done in that space and noting a big part of contribution of emissions is actually the building of construction. And, you know, and I'll talk about this later, we have lots of things to talk about today and we'll talk about that, about the GABA rebuild. In here, it also talks about another thing, I just want to touch about this, an increased resilience related to residents and property from natural hazards. And in here in this report, it says it's closely monitoring, it doesn't say that it's on track. And I'm thankful that we can see that on there because we know when our city floods, residents are trapped, they don't have the resilience, there is increased risk for their property. And with the aim, with blunt instruments like the TLPI focused on floodplains, deep, deep floodplains, it should only be monitored because we are going to be putting more and more people at risk. I'll move on to talk about item D, which is advertising devices designations, proposed amended advertising devices and design. And I'll talk briefly, quite briefly to this one. What we see here is a reduction in green spaces and private property. This change, to me and to many out there, really calls as an indicator of who the real opposition here will be in the future. Because we know that the Greens have the largest, most active grassroots campaign and mobilisation and that is being reduced publicly, right? But that doesn't matter, we're still going to be campaigning and every person that can't be there with more than four designs in a park will be on doors and we'll continue that work. But to me, that's a clear indicator that we're trying to stop that grassroots movement. I'll move on to number E, the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge and the Mogal Road Corridor. I think I'll speak specifically about the green bridges in this. When the green bridges were announced, there was five. Let's not be fooled here to the sense that the promise was, we're going to deliver some bridges at the tune of five hundred and fifty million. That wasn't what was said, we know this. What was said is, we as a city are going to deliver five green bridges. And what we're experiencing now and since the budget's really where the other green bridges and the blowouts became apparent, is a rollback of that delivery in that statement. And as we roll back this delivery and statement, again, we've got to refer back to what the LMP council keep referring to, green and sustainable, green and sustainable. Well, if you want a green and sustainable council, you've got to build these bridges. These bridges are key to active transport in this city. And to draw a line on it now, when it's clear that the financial management of these bridges, the idea of that budget was pulled out of nowhere, you know, that number is clearly not even close to delivering five bridges. When that number is pulled out of nowhere, right? We know that the sustainability, there's no true dedication by this LMP council to the delivery of green, active public, active transport in the city. I think it is, it's clear that the St Lucia to West End Bridge is going to disappear. Right now, council's saying, yeah, we want to do it, we want to do it, but now we need the other levels. This is a constant thing. We heard it about the Vulture Street bike paths, we hear it about the Kedram, Kangaroo Point River Walk. Council will pull back and continue to pull back and not deliver because they are overspending. And frankly, when we talk about these green bridges, I think the residents of West End, To Wong and St Lucia deserve better. And I think they want better, those residents in To Wong, they want that access to that green space in Orla Lee Park. And the residents of West End really want to access the train station and the shopping centre across the river. And without a ferry in that area, it makes it really impossible for that isolated group of population to get anywhere near that. And so please do not listen when it says, our promise was only five hundred and fifty million. They talked about five bridges, the delivery should be five bridges within ten years. That's what the city needs, that's what the city wants. And if that's what you want too, well, I know what you've got to do and the residents of Brisbane are going to do when we have a very different shaped council and very different look council in two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Massey. Further speakers to the report? Councillor Johnson? I can, I don't see anybody standing, no.
There was, councillor Cunningham was going to, but that's okay. I'll go next. I rise to speak on all the items before us today. Firstly, I'll start with item F, Amendment of Council Standing and Committee Meeting Dates. This is a completely unnecessary item, essentially when the election's called, council can't meet. So there is really no point to having it on the item, other than trying to exclude democratic scrutiny and oversight of the actions of this council. This council is in fact cutting two council meetings. Are they putting them in December to replace the two council meetings that were lost or in January before the caretaker provisions cut in to make sure that decisions of the council can occur?
Councillor Johnson? Please continue.
Okay, I just thought, you know, the deputy mayor who's having a conversation with the finance chair might be an issue for you, Mister Chairman.
If it gets loud enough, I will ask the deputy mayor and the finance chair to leave the chamber.
Oh, okay, good. Glad to see it. I can hear them from here, Mister Chairman.
Can you please continue?
Well, Mister Chairman, you've said that I can't speak to another councillor in this place, so is it okay for the deputy mayor to do so?
No, I said if you were going to have a meeting.
I haven't had a meeting with anybody in this chamber, so I'm just wondering, Mister Chairman...
Councillor Johnson, I'm not going to uphold your point of order, you can either, please...
I'm not making a point of order.
Well then, please continue.
Yeah, I was waiting for the deputy mayor to finish her conversation with the finance chair. That's okay, as long as she's finished her discussion. Oh, no, here she goes, she's back for more. I'm happy to continue, but I'm just really worried that the deputy mayor is continuing to ignore the ruling of the chair and I'm happy to let her, you know, continue her discussion if she'd like to. No? Okay.
Please continue when you're ready.
Yeah, sure, no problems. It's with councillor Murphy now. Sure, you don't want to do anything, Mister Chair?
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order councillor Whitme.
Councillor Murphy just said that councillor Johnston was just being a grub and you've already had a ruling on that today.
I, sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear it, councillor Whitme, I can't make a ruling on something I didn't hear. I do apologise, but I didn't hear it. Councillor Murphy? No? Okay. Councillor Johnson?
Of course he did. Everybody else can hear it, except the Chair. So, we know that this council, we know that this council is not, we know that this council is not engaging in open scrutiny, we know that there is no proper debate happening in the council chamber because council is simply cutting meetings. They're not replacing them, they're not putting them back into the schedule, so they're hiding. And we know why they're hiding because as the other items on the agenda make it very clear, this administration has sent this council into a death spiral on its long term financial sustainability. Major projects are not being delivered. I suspect the Mogal Road project is going to fail. I am that concerned about what's going on over there. A year ago, the councillor for Walter Taylor and the Lord Mayor are out there cheerleaders, it's brilliant, it's going so well, it's brilliant, we're moving on. In the space of less than two years, so when all of the complexities of the construction market have been known, this administration has changed the contract twice, twice, increased millions and millions of dollars. I don't think this administration actually understands what a contract is. And I haven't heard councillor Owen get up and do this, but a contract is a legally binding agreement between two parties to deliver something, usually in exchange for some sort of remuneration. This administration, it seems, cannot do that. Worse, worse still, on pages seventeen and eighteen of the ENC report before us today about this item, there is zero detail in this document, none. For anybody looking at home, and they will be able to go and read this because it forms part of the record of the council meeting, council is asking for changes to a contract and not presenting any paperwork to support it, none. We know why, because separately councillors have been given two paragraphs marked commercial in confidence, which we are not allowed to talk about. The cost and time blowouts. Why are time blowouts secret? I understand why, because the LNP administration don't want residents to know the bad news. Anybody who drives through Indrapilly can see it plain and simple. The project has gone badly, it is continuing to go badly and it is because the LNP administration did not properly scope it. They did not properly scope it. This is then a contractor who does clearly not have the ability to deliver the project. Oh, and there's a lovely discussion happening on the other side of the chamber as well. Oh, and there's a lovely discussion happening on the other side of the chamber as well. The contractor clearly doesn't have the capacity to deliver it either. This project has gone badly because this LNP administration have botched its planning, they have botched its delivery, they are unable to manage the contractor. There's the deputy mayor again. They are unable to manage the contractor. They are unable to financially and responsibly manage the delivery of this project. And why? Because they think there's some sort of advantage in it for the LNP councillor. Well, there's a reckoning coming for him and it's green. I would, I would also mention the cost blowout on the Kangaroo Point Bridge. That is clearly, and there's the deputy mayor still going with her, meeting with the councillor Murphy in the chamber, but I understand she's very busy and has to have those meetings in the chamber. So the Kangaroo Point Bridge project, it's another stuff up. I mean, there isn't a single project that this administration can actually deliver. But I also just want to mention, I don't support the advertising local laws changes. This administration has so badly botched signage that a resident is taking them to court. The matter is now going to the High Court. Council has lost twice and council is now trying to fight off a resident in the High Court of Australia because of how badly managed council's electronic billboards are around the city. And the deputy mayor is still in discussion with councillor Murphy. I know it must be difficult for you to see, Mr Chairman, this ongoing meeting that's happening in the chamber. I just thought I'd put it on the record.
Thank you, please continue.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, that's fine.
That's if you want to, otherwise you can resume your seat.
I'm more than happy to continue, I'm just pointing out that there's an ongoing meeting happening in the chamber. That's okay with you.
You still have two minutes and 25 seconds.
I know, I know, I know, thank you, it's all good.
No worries, my pleasure.
So.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Mackay.
If the councillor doesn't want to speak to the report, could we maybe move on to the next speaker?
Councillor Mackay, as, as you know, and all councillors in this chamber, councillors are permitted to speak for a period of, for a period of 10 minutes. And councillor Johnson was still on her feet. Councillor Johnson, you've got the call.
Yes, and I'm definitely speaking to the report. So the, this council's signage laws are that bad that this council's lost twice and they're now trying to defend very, very bad decision-making on advertising in the High Court of Australia. Here, this administration is allowing free-for-all on signage laws. One year they change it, they say they're tightening it up and then they go, oh, no, well, our councillors can't put their signs up everywhere, we'll loosen them up. This administration is badly managing the public realm of this city and the visual pollution being caused by inappropriate signage is outrageous. This advertising local law is a joke, just like the LNP's administration of the advertising scheme. And it's such a shame that ratepayers' money is going to be wasted twice, council's now been told, no, you've done the wrong thing. And they're fighting it and wasting money in the High Court. It's just a shocking waste of ratepayers' funds. And on the annual report, well, let me just say this. The annual report is an indictment upon the mediocrity and the ineptness of this LNP administration. Oh, and I see the deputy mayor's continuing her meeting in the chamber, so that's great. It is clear that they are not meeting any key financial targets, none of them. It is clear that they have been unable to deliver on projects. It is clear that they have botched, absolutely botched major project delivery. They failed to deliver what they've announced as their own key projects. And this is the record of the LNP administration. And when it comes to the suburbs, it takes a year to get a footpath fixed. They've cut funding for SAM signs. You can't get a road intersection upgrade. Thousands and thousands of people asked for this council's help and this LNP administration can't deliver it.
Sorry, councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham?
Thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on items A, B and C. Firstly, to item A, this is the presentation of the final signed 2223 consolidated financial statements, which have been audited by the auditor general. This always happens to me, Mr Chair, my nose runs when I stand up, excuse me. They are prepared by, thank you councillor Howard. They are prepared by the financial, accounting and external reporting team in corporate finance, all of whom are CPA or CA qualified. Contributions were also received from right across council. The statements have been reviewed and endorsed by the audit committee. From the pandemic to the floods, to the impacts of the war in Europe on supply chains and inflation and the cost of living, we are certainly navigating chopping, chopping financial waters. It's something we continue to have laser focus on to ensure that we're providing the services and infrastructure that our community needs. To a couple of specifics in the report, we see employee costs have increased by nearly $20 million year-on-year as a result of EBA increases. The much discussed materials and services line item increased by 74.4 million due to higher service and contract costs, fuel costs for bus operations and cost of goods sold due to higher production costs and increased demand for products. On cash balances, Mr Chair, in financial year 23, council updated the terms of our short-term borrowing facilities to assist council in optimising our cash flow. It allows council in an environment of really high interest rates to be more efficient and manage more effectively the short-term working capital without the need for council, for council to hold on to large cash balances. So in financial year 23, all drawdowns of the facility were repaid by the end of the financial year, as per the note at 16B. And I just wanted to draw all councillors' attention to that. Council also drew down $176 million lower than anticipated on our overall borrowings and this results in substantial interest savings over the life of the term of the loan. On ratios, Mr Chair, I think it would be important for me to share with the chamber that the asset sustainability and net financial liabilities ratios, as councillor Cassidy through you, Mr Chair, pointed out, do not currently meet the target set out under the current financial management sustainability guideline. However, I would like to share with the changer, chamber a very important point. The Department of State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning has recognised that there are shortcomings in the measurement of these ratios, which has led to the development of in fact a revised guideline. So this is the last time that we will see that current guideline and therefore the ratios reflected in that way. Changes to the ratios will apply from the 1st of July 2023 and they will address those shortcomings. Mr Chair, again, we heard from councillor Cassidy, him struggle to interpret the papers in front of him, not knowing what operating capability means, despite it being set out clearly in the papers. On item B, Mr Chair, Brisbane City Council, and sorry, Mr Chair, on item B, but specifically to the supplementary workforce's contract. Council, as we all know, is a major employer in Brisbane. We have over 300 different job types, each critical to the city. Contrary to what the opposition suggests, the vast majority of our workforce are permanent employees. Every day, people in council are working to make Brisbane a better place to live. They provide essential services and programmes and provide strategic thinking to plan for the Brisbane of tomorrow. To provide a great service and to make this the best city in which to live, work and relax, we must be dynamic and agile. So like most large organisations, council uses supplementary workforce suppliers which provide candidates for short-term engagements. These suppliers are not, sorry, these suppliers are engaged when suitable internal resourcing is not available to meet operational requirements. And this means they're often used for project work, Mr Chair. But this is where it gets interesting. I don't expect councillors to take my word for it. How about we have a listen or pay attention to the federal employment minister, Tony Burke? What does he have to say about supplementary workforce? He recently told the National Press Club, "There are lots of appropriate uses for labour hire. At different times, I've been an employer over the years, I've used labour hire." End quote. Mr Chair, item C is the annual report for the 2223 financial year. This year's report continues to align with our corporate plan and annual plan and budget to meet those legislative requirements. The City of Brisbane Regulation 2012 requires the CEO annual assessment of performance against the corporate plan and that's included in the annual report. I would like to point out, and some councillors may have noticed, that some items in the report have a status of monitor closely. It's not a negative assessment, Mr Chair, but instead it's recognition of the very real influences that a pandemic, a flood and global economic conditions have had on our council. And it means that we should all pay attention to them. The annual report fulfils legislative requirements but also represents an important process by which council progresses in key areas are tracked and recorded. This is council's fourth year of disclosure since making voluntary acknowledgements and commitment in 2019, 2020. The disclosure aligns with globally accepted and widely adopted frameworks and will continue to mature as we progress and connects risk to financial planning and opportunities. The processes behind the disclosure seeks to place council in good stead in preparation for industry body accounting standard and regulatory changes. Finally, I would just like to thank corporate finance and the small team who put together the annual report for their effort in, in putting together these documents and I commend them to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Cunningham. Are there any further speakers to the ENC report? Councillor Wines?
Thanks, Mr Chair. Just want to make some comments generally about item E, the SCP for Mogul Road. And I just wanted to make some comments, just reminding councillors of the nature of the project, the nature of the works and what is trying to be achieved through this particular project. So the Mogul Road roundabout, which we, many of us would be aware of, has long been a sore point in what is the ordinary first complaint to Western suburbs residents. So I'm sure that if I was to ask councillor Adaman or other Western suburbs councillors, what is the number one grizzle that they get, it would be Mogul Road. And so this council is focusing on its portion of Mogul Road, which is of course from roughly High Street to Wong around BBC there, to the highway just shy of Chapel Hill. So we're focusing our works on that network with the principal project being the removal of the roundabout and the replacement with it of what's effectively a bridge or like a, the equivalent of an open level crossing removal we do on a train line, but on a motor vehicle site. The complication for that is that it has three significant access points into that intersection rather than two. So most, most of the time you build a bridge or an open level crossing, you have two significant directions of traffic. This one has three. That is a complication which is being addressed and why the bridge feature was chosen. Now, the project itself or the intersection handles somewhere around 55,000 vehicles a day and has different peaks in different directions, also has to manage what must be the largest retail centre in the Western suburbs, Indrapilly Shopping Town. And so how do you address that? Well, we address that through, as I say, the removal of the roundabout and its replacement with this bridge, open level crossing style project. Now, while we've been in there doing that particular project, our council has used the opportunity in partnership with a number of service providers to improve the facilities in that area as well. So as part of this project, we have upgraded significant drainage infrastructure, in particular around Nelson, Nelson Parade, which is one of the approach streets to the north of Indrapilly as a result of the, of the, excuse me, Mogul Road, near Indrapilly Shopping Town, as a result of the improvements to the drainage work there. Significant, there was a significant number of properties downstream that will no longer flood by, as a result of overflow in significant rain events. That's but one project. There's a similar, similar work being done at the intersection of Belgrave and Coonan. There's also been a significant drainage works for a significant portion of Coonan Street, which is one of the reasons that it was forced to be one lane for quite some time, was a, and a vital upgrade of the drainage system. Modernisation and improvement of the water system, so people using better, safer, cleaner water pipes in that area. Better, faster, more reliable internet has been provided as part of this project. We've also replaced the sewer line, which you probably won't see material benefit of, but I assure you that you're better off with better sewers, I promise you that. So that's part of these works. And with the, the intersection and the roads, the age that they are in that area, there are a number of complications, both foreseeable and unforeseeable, which have occurred. For example, we found some stormwater pipe that was of a significant age that required archaeologists from the University of Queensland, excuse me, to attend site, document and record the drainage work properly and then have parts of that drainage removed and handed over to the Indrapilly Historical Society. We would call that an unforeseen complication, but something that was, that we've done, something that we thought necessary as part of the preservation of the living history of Brisbane city. We have also taken opportunities to improve road surfaces all around the area, including roads that were not in, within the initial consideration or contemplation of our works. So we continue to expand the scope. And that's a point that I continue to make, that when we began, this project was called the Indrapilly Roundabout Upgrade Project. We have not called it that for some time. That is but one portion of what is now the Mogul Road Corridor Upgrade Programme. Now, to properly deliver that has had its challenges, the cost challenges have been well documented by many, but there can be, there can be a great deal of focus put on the fact that since we began this project, the cost of concrete and the cost of steel and the cost of wages have significantly increased. And a standard, a standard normal project would consider pre-escalation prices would be up 50% in most of those projects, in most of those inputs. Now, once you, we are in a period now of stabilised prices at a new level. So the prices aren't returning to what they were, they've merely stopped increasing sharply, they have settled at a new higher level. To borrow, you know, we see, we see some of our state colleagues indicate that they feel, feeling that they too are feeling cost pressures. Minister Bailey famously said, anyone who claimed to bring a project in on time, on budget was a bull dust artist. Editorial by yours truly, so it's passable in this place. But councils' projects have increased in line with the costs anticipated. And this project and the figures produced in these documents are within the contemplation of the earlier figures that were published. And the earlier figures that have been, you know, in media responses that have been printed by Brisbane Times, also within the contemplation of, of a lot of the work that we've done. We have worked closely with the contractor to reassure the council of the efforts that we go to, to keep costs down, to include the contractor in the work we do. There is a co-located headquarters in Indrapilly where their engineers and our engineers work together to get outcomes for the best interests and the best price for the people of Brisbane. Now, this particular project continues to be a project that will materially benefit not merely the residents of Indrapilly, but well beyond that community. Deep into Poornbar Ward, across Walter Taylor Ward, deep into Tennyson Ward will benefit from this improvement. Now, as I say, the, the increases reflected within the alterations, the SCP, are, as I say, within the contemplation of earlier published figures and also a reflection of the increased inputs, which are well documented, occurring across all elements of the construction industry, whether they be council or whether they be residential or whether they be merely household, well known and well documented. We just want to make sure that as we continue to navigate this project forward, we do so. so in a way that will guarantee the best possible outcome for the residents in a primary purpose of the work, but also in the secondary purpose by being able to upgrade all of the other, all of the other secondary services in the area, which we can do once we've opened up the earth and had a look at what can be done, and we work within that. We also, just to, there was some, some comment made about the neighbours, and I can only offer my sincere apologies because it would be very loud to live near there. A lot of work has been taken, a lot of decisions have been taken to have significant work done at night because the effects, we want to make sure that the efficiency of the network remains. However, we have listened and we have heard the concerns of local residents, and one of the things that we've been able to do is shift a lot of the night shifts into day shifts. And hopefully that will, and there's been a focus on trying to reduce the amount of work that, that where there's an option between day and night, we take it in the day, and that's also reflected in our S C P as well. So we are listening to local residents as well as we continue to deliver this project. So does it mean there will be no night work? No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is there will be a significant number of night shift work shifted to day shift work to try to reduce the nuisance of this work on local residents as well. That's also within the S C P. So can I ask for, or the councillor, the council to consider supporting this to be able to deliver what is a excellent project for the western suburbs, which will benefit many, many people, but also allow us to be more considerate of the neighbours in that area as well?
Thank you, councillor Wines. Are there any further speakers to the E N C report? Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, thanks, Mister Chair. I'd like to speak on item G, the amendment to the significant contracting plan as it relates to items within Programme One. So as noted by the Lord Mayor, the item before us today is to allow for an amendment to the previously approved significant contracting plan for two major infrastructure projects. And I want to talk about the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. We know, and we've heard it time and time again in this chamber, that Brisbane is the fastest growing capital city in the country, and we need to keep up the pipeline of projects and infrastructure to accommodate that booming population. And we know that the Kangaroo Point Bridge will become a critical link for people travelling to the CBD and particularly around events at the Gabba Stadium. So this is an important link for our city. And as we flagged previously, we know that we are building a bridge at a time when major projects Australia-wide are under incredible pricing pressure. That's why in November last year, we brought forward an amendment to the S C Ps for design and construction of the K P G B. And at that time, I talked to the chamber about some of the impacts that we were seeing in industry, the price of steel going up by thirty percent, the Lord Mayor mentioned that before, before. Thirty-five percent of the bridge is structural steel. So I don't know how we were to avoid price increases, the price of structural steel, and it makes up such a critical part of the project. And of course, the price of concrete, cement and sand, over thirty percent increases from, on, on all of those commodities from where we were in July twenty twenty-two, where we let the contract. Of course, we also had the twenty twenty-two floods, where we suspended the project's marine works for four months, as if bringing all that equipment on site and just having it sit there idle for four months due to the flood wasn't going to cost the project significantly. We also had to help the state government remove their drift rest from which they had spent the better part of a decade letting rot on the river. And finally, they decided to remove it, and we gave them much of our barges and cranes in order to get that work done. Of course, fast forward to today, market conditions have continued to deteriorate. As councillor Wines said, things are getting worse. They are deteriorating, they are not getting any better. So make no mistake, the S C P increase before us today is a result of continued economic hardships, increased labour costs, shortages in labour, increased material costs, as well as rising interest rates. Queensland's civil construction sector remains twenty percent below pre-pandemic levels in terms of its capacity. So we have a situation where we are needing to build more infrastructure than ever before, but we have the lowest level of capacity and capability in the sector than ever before, which means demand is skyrocketing and will continue, I would say, demand will continue to outstrip supply well into twenty twenty-four, and that's something that Infrastructure Australia have told us. And we aren't alone in dealing with these circumstances. Shared projects like construction for the Dexus Waterfront Brisbane Development, the Queens Wharf Development have all seen massive skyrocketing cost increases, and that isn't to mention the large cost increases on other major projects under the purview of those few streets away in George Street. Elsewhere in this country, we know that the Victorian Government has announced they wouldn't host the Commonwealth Games. There have been a whole range of project impacts all around the country due to what we are going through at the moment. But Chair, as I said, we cannot afford to simply cancel work on critical infrastructure. So despite these cost increases, we will be forging ahead. We will build the infrastructure that our growing city needs, and unlike other levels of government, we are always open, honest and transparent when it comes to telling people about those cost increases. We are the most transparent government in Queensland, we certainly are, Chair, and what you see here is what you get. The Kangaroo Point Bridge is council's most significant active travel project, of course, but it hasn't been spared for mounting construction costs. Connect Brisbane, led by Bestick Swap Pack, have agreed to deliver the project at the revised price now of two hundred and ninety-nine million dollars. And to explain Chair Council's current contract, as the Lord Mayor said earlier, is it on a cost plus, pain share, gain share arrangement? And since the start of the project, there has been very much a lot of pain to share, but very little gain. And I want to reiterate that when we awarded this contract during Covid, the market had such a high level of uncertainty in it that a cost plus contracting arrangement was the only way in which we would receive tenders. If we had gone with a fixed price, a hard dollar contract, we would have received no offers, so the bridge would simply have not been built. So now we are moving to a new fixed price arrangement, which will minimise rate payers' exposure to the unpredictable cost fluctuations that we've seen in the market thus far. So what we are seeing here is that the contractor will, is prepared to take on the risk of cost overruns beyond the agreed price in the documents before us. So whilst regrettable that the cost of the project has increased, this arrangement will provide the best value for council and rate payers, considering the current unpredictability of the construction industry. What is certain though is that Connect Brisbane and council are absolutely committed to delivering the Kangaroo Point Bridge. The Kangaroo Point Bridge is now over fifty percent complete, and pieces of the bridge are starting to come together to reveal the final form. And we've reached some very significant milestones, Mister Chair. More than two hundred and forty metres of the bridge span across the Brisbane River are now complete, and further steel modules will be installed over the next few months. So once these are installed, this will connect two parts of our city that are, as I've always said, extremely close but separated by water, the CBD and the Kangaroo Point Peninsula. And that will massively reduce the time it takes for residents of Kangaroo Point and the Gabba to travel to and from the CBD, with the bridge shaving up to thirty minutes of some journeys. So some really critical travel time savings. And as I mentioned the other day to the media, eighty-four thousand cars that will take off the road each and every year, six thousand residents that we expect to use the bridge every day, walking and cycling. So some pretty big numbers, Chair. And the change, all of these changes to the S C P will enable council to sign this agreement with the contractor and to continue our progress on the bridge. So just in summary, Mister Chair, while, while the impacts of these cost pressures are very significant to council, of course, we are, we are not alone in this major projects across the country are experiencing significant cost increases, as are all three levels of government and other cities around the world. But the reality is we are building some, some enormous city shaping infrastructure at the moment, infrastructure that will be critical to the future of Brisbane, it will be critical to us hosting the twenty thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games, and they will be critical links between the city and its suburbs. And that goes for not only this green bridge, but also other projects like Moghl Road, like Brisbane Metro. These are links that have been talked about for a long time, and the Shrinna Council is getting on with the job and delivering them. I'll, I'll leave it there. Thanks very much, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Are there any further speakers to the E N C report? I see no one rising. Lord Mayor, write a reply. No, we will now put the items. Now, bear with me, we're going to put A and E to the vote. All those in favour of A and E, say aye. Those against, say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Eyes to my right and nose to my left. Thank you, Dwyer. Clarks, please read the results.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being nineteen in favour and five against.
The motion has passed for items A and E. Councillors will now put items B and D. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Eyes to my right and nose to my left. Please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being nineteen in favour and five abstentions.
Items B and D have passed. Councillors will put the final items to the vote, items C and F. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, say no. The ayes have it. Right. We'll now move on to the next item. Bear with me. Deputy Mayor.
Mister Chair, I move that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane Twenty Thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting, held on Tuesday the fifth of September twenty twenty-three, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane Twenty Thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting, held on Tuesday the fifth of September twenty twenty-three, be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. First of the Business Hub and what is, is on in the next week, and remember we then have a recess, so please councillors, have a look and see if you can share on your socials what's coming up to let your, your small businesses, medium businesses know that they can still pop into the Business Hub. On the thirteenth of September, we have a topic called Creating Mentally Healthy Workplaces. This is a conversation to learn how you can better support the mental health of your valued employees and create a supportive workplace environment, and that is being provided by our business expert Mental Wealth at Work. On the fifteenth of September, we have nine thirty to eleven thirty Drawing for Self-Care, and this is about breaking down barriers and an active workshop. It is being presented by our business expert Mindful Doodles. There you go, Lord Mayor, maybe I should go and do that, do you think? Just, I don't, I think I do it every Tuesday. That's right. How to overcome the challenges of reaching decision makers and moving past gatekeepers by crafting a compelling value proposition. So that's just the two in the next couple of days, but please keep your eyes out, go to brisbanebusiness, let me just check that again, businessinbrisbane.com.au, and so you can share that with your local businesses as well. In last week's committee presentation, we did the Sustainable Development Goals and the Global City Initiative, and how council is working to make sure, not only being as host city of Brisbane Twenty Thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games, but as a council again, we can maximise the sustainable aspects of the game. With the new norm that we've spoken about here and many times, there is also now an opportunity to work across the seventeen S G Gs with the United Nations, U N Habitat and I O C, and developing a range of social, economic and environmental themes to support our community here in Brisbane. So we're going to be working with those very large organisations and recognise the initiatives that we do so well in Brisbane, which is why we already have a silver certification and are working towards a voluntary local review towards gold certification as well. There's many details there, and it is all in the report, and I recommend it to the chamber.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further speakers? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, I'd like to speak on the Economic Development and Brisbane Twenty Thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report. I just, I note with some interest the issues that are in the report here before us today, and I just want to start with some facts and figures about Brisbane's greenwashing of the Brisbane Olympics. And, you know, it, it's really interesting, isn't it, that Brisbane is planning to, and I quote, maximise the use of existing and temporary venues, these will be newly built temporary venues, with forty, sorry, with eighty-four percent of venues being existing or temporary. Existing venues are obviously only part of that, the temporary venues are going to be new. But it's really interesting, I think, that this is less, this is a lower objective than the Olympics that are being held in Paris next year, who have an equivalent figure of ninety-five percent, and Los Angeles in twenty twenty-eight, which is claiming that they will have one hundred percent of their buildings that are being adapted and reused. So I guess my question is, why has Brisbane set its sights so low? What are the real figures? What are the amount of buildings that are going to be reused versus temporary? Because I find it really quite interesting that given we've had the longest run, Brisbane of city, City of Brisbane has had the longest lead time into the Olympics, that we have set a lower target than cities that are doing Olympics in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-eight. I don't believe these figures either adequately represent the situation when it comes to the Gabba. So one of the issues is that the deputy mayor has raised and the lord mayor raises that these are going to be the green games, these are going to be the green Olympics. The problem with that is that Brisbane City Council is supporting the state government knocking down the Gabba, which is going to have a massive carbon impact in the city. The amount of new materials that will be needed, the amount of waste that will be created, the amount of emissions that will be created, it's just a phenomenal impact to knock down an existing structure and replace it. So I think the idea that somehow these games are going to be green and sustainable have been thrown out the window by Brisbane City Council's support of demolition of the Gabba and parts of the historic East Brisbane State School. So it is astonishing to me that the deputy mayor is standing up and saying how wonderful our Sustainable Development Goals are, and that they're working very hard to deliver them. The problem with that is it does not appear to be based in any actual recognition of what is being done to deliver the Olympics itself. You don't knock down a perfectly good sporting stadium to, to build a new one, particularly when you have in your existing Olympics plan, probably the plan maybe met some of these objectives, but council's not building to the plan. And it is such a concern that the state has essentially jettisoned the actual bid that we put to the I O C, and council's just, you know, they're, they're the chief cheerleader of the state government on this issue to knock down the Gabba. And it is, it is really disappointing to see how the environmental and sustainable benchmarks that this council is supposed to meet are going to be undermined by this council's own actions, and I, in support of knocking down the Gabba. And I just, I find it to be not only financially irresponsible, but it is going to be environmentally irresponsible for the city. And I just want to put on the record, this is, you know, this is, this is Brisbane's the first climate positive Olympics. And this is a consultant who worked on the Sydney Olympics, and I just want to put a quote on the record here. For it to be climate positive, it has to take emissions out of the air. Oh, sorry, I've just lost that. It has to negate all of the existing emissions the games create and take out more than the games need to, to be carbon neutral. The new state- The new stadium idea went directly against this goal. There's a huge amount of energy just to take it down, plus the impacts on the heritage around it, and then you've got to turn around and rebuild it. It is astonishing that Brisbane City Council is supporting a decision that flies in the face of its own public statements about this being a climate-positive Olympics. Decisions like the state government's to knock down the GABA and Brisbane City Council's support for that undermine that statement. It makes it harder for this to be a climate-positive Olympics and a green Olympics. And it is very disappointing, of course, that, it's very disappointing, of course, that Brisbane City Council is supporting this decision. So I just want to just sum up by saying this, because I think, I think the lord mayor's been over there to LA, and he's, I think he went to Paris too, from memory, I think he's been to both of those places. Yeah, along with all the council offices that are on the Olympics junkets as well. How is it that Brisbane's setting a lower standard than these other cities, LA and Paris, that are coming before us, that have had less time to deliver on their initiatives? Because Brisbane City Council has the most time any city's ever had, and yet we're not seeing good decision-making by the state government, and we're seeing that being supported by Brisbane City Council. And it is, it is clear that these stats that we're being presented every week probably don't even include the GABA, because the Queensland government's own public documents still don't list the GABA as one of the six new venues planned for 2032. But it says it's a venue that's going to be upgraded. So if knocking something down completely and then rebuilding it is an upgrade, that's an interesting statement. But the problem for Brisbane is, it does not help us meet our climate targets and objectives. It is an unnecessary, it is, it's unnecessary, it's a waste of money, and it will have negative both community impacts, financial impacts, and most importantly, environmental impacts for our city. And I would just say that, that recording all of these carbon calculations needs to be done so that all of the changes that are going to happen for the Olympics are being done. There's no point in excluding things because they weren't part of your plan. If you're going to change the plan, you have to measure the climate impacts very properly. So I just think it's disappointing that we can see two other cities with Olympics coming up doing much better and setting higher standards than Brisbane. And I hope that Brisbane will lift its game and make sure that we too aim for one hundred per cent when it comes to Brisbane 32.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Are there any further speakers to the report? Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on the report that was given to the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee about Sustainable Development Goals and Cities' Global Initiative. It was an interesting presentation where the deputy mayor had the officers get the information about what those Sustainable Development Goals are, what they all mean in isolation from what this administration is doing, gives a presentation on that, about which other cities are going down this path, and the stage at which Brisbane is now at in terms of being assessed as a sustainable city in the global, in the Sustainable Development Goal sense. And I heard the deputy mayor say we're at silver level, I think it was, is the terminology level, and that is the bottom. That's the sort of entry point, which I guess you have to enter at some point, and obviously Brisbane's entry has been accepted. And the next stage is to go through a self-assessment process. Well, goodness me, if the LMP are doing a self-assessment on sustainability here in Brisbane, we should all be very worried about what they are going to produce, because we, we've seen, we have seen the LMP's track record when it comes to sustainability. So we don't know, we don't know what the LMP's plan is to get us to meeting those Sustainable Development Goals. We know what they are over there, we know what the LMP's track record over here is on sustainability, we know that going into the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, and going into an assessment phase to see whether we are a globally sustainable city, we know we're seeing public transport patronage fall off a cliff, we know we are seeing levels of car-based transport emissions from that rise exponentially on this LMP council's watch, we know that there are six thousand streets in Brisbane that have no footpaths on them for people to be able to actively travel around our suburbs, we know that we are thousands and thousands of hectares of tree cover and bushland away from council's own goal of forty per cent tree cover at the moment, and no real plan going forward to be able to get us to forty per cent. And, you know, I remember a couple of weeks ago councillor Davis said, oh, they're at thirty-eight point something percent, it's very close to forty, but when you're talking about millions of square hectares that needs to be protected to reach that, a couple of per cent in the city the size of Brisbane is in fact a very big number to overcome. We know that the LMP administration, to account for carbon emissions of the organisation, have bought what could be dodgy carbon credits on a scheme that has been proven internationally to be making carbon emissions worse. So I wonder how that's going to stack up when we are judged against these Sustainable Development Goals. And emissions from council that are being offset by millions of dollars' worth of overseas carbon credits remain very high. So we're on the bottom rung, there's no plan in place to improve Brisbane's sustainability genuinely, and there's no amount of LMP greenwashing that'll do it, there's no annual reports they can present, there's no brochures, glossy brochures, and the Walkable Brisbane Strategy, which talks about no actions, they can't just present them and get ticked off in this process, I think it's going to be a little more thorough. And we've also heard today, we've heard today, despite the lord mayor signing on to organic recycling just a couple of weeks ago, we had the chair responsible for the rollout of that in Brisbane, councillor Marks, get up today and say that the LMP have no interest in it whatsoever, that they don't want to roll out organic recycling here in Brisbane, they don't want to see additional services to remove in excess of a hundred thousand tonnes of organic material going into landfill each and every year. So I understand why the deputy mayor would bring something like this to the committee to appear to be doing something, to make it appear like the LMP care about sustainability, and make it appear like the LMP have some environmental credentials. But when you go through and scratch underneath the surface just a little bit, you know that the LMP's track record in this place is going to hinder our city going forward to become genuinely sustainable. You know, I think after twenty years of this LMP administration, I think all that they could possibly hope for is to say that they've applied, try and get through the next six months saying the word sustainable, sustainability a lot, without actually delivering anything at all. Their actions speak far louder than a report to a committee, unfortunately, far, far louder. So whether it's about active and public transport, whether it's about being a genuinely sustainable council which sees not just our emissions as an organisation, but our residents' emissions and what we manage for them waste going down, whether it's about active transport or public transport out in the suburbs, this LMP administration continues to fail on every single front. We've heard about their failures and read about their failures earlier in this meeting in terms of financial management and financial sustainability. They're failing in terms of managing the community's assets out in the suburbs of Brisbane, and they're failing on every front to make Brisbane a genuinely sustainable city. And they'll be found out, they'll be found out through this process. There's only so much you can fudge on a self-assessment checklist before that actually gets checked against some genuine evidence gathering from an external organisation. So it is important, it is important that we should strive as a city towards being more sustainable. We don't just sit in isolation of the world, we know that, but we also know that our city, Brisbane, is ground zero for the dangerous effects of climate change, we're seeing that. We're seeing an increased risk of flooding across an increased, an increased part of Brisbane, more flooding from the river, more flooding from creeks, more flooding from overland flow, less investment, of course, from this LMP administration mitigating those things. We're seeing the dangerous effects of climate change when it comes to flooding. We're now seeing the dangerous effects of climate change as well, as the seasons rapidly change now for bushfires here in Brisbane as well. So we don't sit in isolation, whether it comes to the actions that we take to make us more sustainable, we certainly don't sit in isolation when it comes to the effects of global climate change as well. So sure, we should be trying to achieve these Sustainable Development Goals, and we should try and be more sustainable as a council and as a city, but it's quite clear from the LMP's track record that they aren't the people to deliver it. They are definitely not the people to deliver it. In a modern city like Brisbane, people will be looking for different leadership come March next year, and it certainly won't be the same tired old LMP administration that they've been offering. I think things will change, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Are there further speakers to the report? Councillor Massey.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I welcome this, I welcome this oversight. I think it's a wonderful thing that we have to deliver on these goals, and that there'll be another thing reviewing it, because by gosh, we're not, we're not delivering them currently. I mean, let's go to the first goal right now, which is no poverty, right? No poverty is the first goal. And in that goal itself, I'm hoping that the council is aware that neighbourhood centres across Queensland and Brisbane, specifically Brisbane, are now doing food relief at two hundred per cent higher than 2019. Right? Neighbourhood centres in my ward and your ward are now delivering food relief at two hundred per cent. So how on earth are we going to touch No Hunger? How are we going to do that? Especially when we look at the delivery and the support of community centres from council, right? I think today there was a call for more delivery with Homelessness Connect, we can ask for more delivery in community groups by stopping advertising in Living in Brisbane, and that was rejected. We cannot ignore the fact, existing and temporary venues, eighty-four per cent, right? I think councillor, through you, Chair, councillor Johnston talked about the fact that this goal is much lower, much, much lower than Olympic Games that are happening in one year? And then two years away. Speaking of Paris, you know, we have an Olympics that will be delivered in Paris that is not only rejuvenating their river, not only closing down streets within the inner city to make them into boulevards and to green these cities, but here instead, we're demolishing a stadium, we're completely, completely displacing a group of children, interrupting their studies, right? Only to build it up again. And it's interesting to note that, because of course, in the annual report that we just read before, it stated it really quickly, it said, construction is one of the, has one of the largest footprints on emissions. And here we are saying that we're going to destroy a stadium that the LMP council unanimously supported, right? We're going to destroy it, then we're going to rebuild it, and somehow, somehow, we're going to try to get more than an entry-level Silver Star, right? For the Climate Positive Olympics. All right? And, and, and I'll go further than that, because of course, the fourth goal is quality education. Quality education for these young people who are absolutely getting displaced, dealing with that trauma, and going to be sitting out of catchment. Fascinating. So I welcome this, I'm looking forward to seeing how this oversight works. You know, we go through here and we're talking about, I turn the page, so we're on page two of the report, there are five gold certificate, certification requirements, I'm going to go to number two, Stakeholder Engagement Plan, right? Review and prioritisation of goals and targets against strategy objectives is carried out with discussion papers prepared, and a clear definition of vision and strategy objectives created. I'm looking forward to council demonstrating their stakeholder engagement plan. We're all completely aware about Lumina, how this is going to be an incredible attraction specific for Olympic Games, and we know how much stakeholder engagement is done there, how many submissions were done, how angry people are in Walter Taylor, in Pullenvale, and in Paddington, about how their engagement was completely ignored, completely ignored, and they're still fighting on it. You know, here in this, what we see predominantly is an amazing greenwash. If we can come up here and say, look, we're going to like try to meet these goals, but what we know is the Brisbane 2032 Olympics isn't going to meet these goals, right? They're setting lower expectations for existing venues and temporary venues than other Olympics that are going to be happening sooner rather than later. They're not, they're not like literally investing, literal investment in community centres in the affordability crisis right now, where people are being hungry, they're going to destroy quality of education for three hundred and six students in East Brisbane State School, and they don't really care because they unanimously support the GABA rebuild. And beyond that, interestingly enough, of course, the thirteenth goal is climate action, right? You know, often this council talks about, and I've mentioned this before today, how it is a net-zero council, and yet, as I mentioned, we've only decreased emissions by seven per cent since 2016 and 17. And there are actions now, immediately, that could be taken on by this council to actually show that we are going to go for climate change, including, you know, through you, Chair, from the lord mayor. One immediate action that could be taken is banning all fossil fuels advertising.
Just one moment, councillor, there's a little bit too much chatter in the room. Can I have a bit of silence, please? Councillor Massey.
Thank you. You know, one immediate action that we can do is actually by banning all fossil fuel advertising in Brisbane City Council, and as recently, within the month, I know that people wrote to the lord mayor saying we should do that, to which the lord mayor said the revenue's too high. Right? How can we call ourselves working on climate change action when we say that the revenue we receive from advertising from fossil fuels is too high, so we won't take that step forward? I think it is incredible that we will see these report, I look forward to seeing how it connects to how Brisbane City Council is going to deliver, because I think it is good that we should be trying to live up to these goals. Do I think we'll reach it? Probably not. You know, I think it's going to be a really, really tough, 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 you know, path to get to a climate-zero Games, let alone a climate-positive Games, which is what the Brisbane 32 Olympics is supposed to be. And so, you know, in closing, I welcome, you know, I'm supportive of the Sustainable Development Goals for City, City's Global Initiatives, I'm supportive that we're going to have this oversight, because I undeniably believe that the LMP council, if they were even still in charge by them, which I don't think they will be, will be absolutely found lacking, because there is no real move towards climate action, there is no real move to stopping hunger, to quality education. You know, there is no real aim to actually be diamond or platinum certification. Right now, we're at silver, I'm hopeful we'll get to gold, but when you have a council that's completely, undeniably invested in the destruction of a stadium that big, just to build it again, the targets become very hard to reach. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any further speakers? No? Deputy Mayor, write a reply. No, fair enough. We'll now put the report, all those in favour say aye. Those against say no. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee, please.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of September 2023 be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Wang that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of September 2023 be adopted. Councillor Murphy, you've got the call.
Thanks, Chair. Last week's Transport Committee received an update on one of council's most loved initiatives, which is of course, the Active School Travel Programme. The Active School Travel Programme, of course, benefits students, parents, carers and teachers by offering primary schools within Brisbane a range of resources, tools and incentives to leave the car at home and to travel actively to school. Now, in its 20th year, this is Australia's largest and longest-running Active School Travel Programme. Since the programme began in 2004, 169 Brisbane primary schools and more than 130,000 students have participated in the programme. That is approximately 88% of involvement across all primary schools in Brisbane, which I think is a testament to the programme. You do not get schools signing up to programmes like that in those numbers unless they are very good, and Active School Travel is very, very good. So throughout 2022, councils worked with 37 schools and encouraged more than 19,000 students and their families to walk, ride or scoot to school. The programme continues to deliver high success rates with increased active travel from an average of around 31% at the start of the year to 43% by the end. To put this into numbers, walking was the most popular way to actively travel, with just under 2,000 students walking per week at the end of 2022. At the end of each year, council seeks feedback from the programme's committee members via a survey. More than 80% of respondents indicated that the programme had helped to foster community cohesion at their school and 95% said that the programme had helped to increase overall physical activity levels in their students. The committee also learned that council is currently recruiting schools for participation in 2024, with applications closing at the end of this week on the 15th of September. And I'd encourage every councillor in the chamber to approach one of their local schools that may not be part of the Active School Travel Programme or maybe has done it a long time in the past to come back in and so we can welcome them into our new schools for 2024. We'll soon celebrate the end of the 2023 Active School Travel Year with a big awards evening that will highlight our schools' outstanding achievements. And of course, we will announce our schools for 2024 as well. I'll be emceeing that event as I always do and councillors will know if their local school is up for an award. So I look forward to seeing councillors across the chamber there at the Active School Travel Awards. And speaking of, love, Mr Chair, the latest trial programme that council has launched this year is the Active School Travel, the Kindy Active Travel Trial, which is KAT or CAT for short, and I quite like that acronym. This Kindy Active Travel aims to give children and families skills and experiences to establish active travel behaviours before they transition to primary school. Two kindergartens have signed on for the trial, that is C and K Ironwood Place, Community Childcare Centre in councillor Griffiths Ward and the Stones Corner Community Kindy in councillor Cunningham's ward. And it was at the Stones Corner Community Kindy where we were actually able to launch the Walkable Brisbane Strategy just a few months ago, with Kindy Active Travel course being a massive part of that. So both kindergartens are located on the Norman Creek Bike Way, near high-performing schools that are in the Active School Travel Programme. This programme, or this trial, I should say, is funded by the Department of Transport and Main Roads, so we thank them for their support. And it encourages these kids to build their bike and scooter skills as well as providing bike maintenance education for the parents. We don't expect these Kindy kids to be maintaining their bikes just yet, Mr Chair, be a bit too advanced for them. Look, following the success of the trial, which I do expect, Chair, research to understand the current landscape of active travel within the high schools will also commence. So you can see what we're trying to do here. We're trying to build a full stack programme where we can, you know, cradle to grave as far as the school is concerned, make sure that we are embedding that love of active travel, that love of walking and sustainably travelling in our city with our school kids. So I have mentioned this in the chamber in the past, but Active School Travel has been studied internationally and it is an award-winning behaviour training programme that we are very proud of here in council. And it was actually a Newman, a Lord Mayor Campbell Newman initiative, started in 2004, so almost at the 20-year anniversary and one of the greatest successes and legacies of Campbell Newman in this place. The committee also considered a petition with 120 signatures requesting council install separated lanes for cyclists and pedestrians in the shared section of the Kedron Brook Bike Way in Lutwich, which noted that existing shared path layout creates the potential for conflict between cyclists and pedestrians. And this is of course, is because the path is so popular, so many people want to use it, there is congestion on the shared path. So the recommendation was to support the installation of a separated pedestrian and cyclist facility at the site, subject to feasibility. We, of course, recognise the benefit of separated paths, but we need to do some more design work to determine whether these paths would fit in the limited space that's there underneath in the Lutwich Road underpass. So this project is now awaiting funding for these improvements and will compete with other citywide projects for priority. So the committee voted unanimously to support this recommendation and both local councillors supported the recommendation as well, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Further speakers? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I was to speak on both of these items. And we'll just start on item B, the petition requesting council install separate lanes for cyclists and pedestrians in the shared section for the Kedron Brook Bike Way. And obviously, it's something that councillor Murphy has said was supported and in the recommendation was that it's one of those projects that has been investigated, has been identified as a positive project that is supported by the council offices and listed for construction awaiting funding. Well, something to that effect, not quite that, as we had the discussion in the committee around this. That used to be the standard response, that there was a list of projects that were deemed to be of benefit, that are supported by council and awaiting funding in a future budget. That's changed slightly. In this case, we had the discussion, we're given the assurance that this project is certainly one that is supported and awaiting funding. But we were told by councillor Murphy that the list is just so long now that it's hard to sort of maintain it, I guess, or to have a comprehensive list of projects that are awaiting funding. And the other complicating factor, of course, Chair, in that is that we found out during the budget information sessions from councillor Murphy, is that there's no funding allocated in the forward estimates for the Active Travel Infrastructure Fund, in his words, because no political party had yet made any commitment about that. So the conundrum that I'm sure those engineers in council have at the moment, particularly in this instance, over here at the Kedron Brook Bike Way at Lutwich, is that they've identified this as a good project, but they're now hamstrung by a political process. And I'm not sure that's been the case in the past. Sure, levels of funding and specific commitments are made at election times and then they are delivered, more or less, by those who are elected. But in this case, what we've seen now over this long political process and this long-term LMP administration is the politicisation of these projects to the nth degree, to the point now where independent council offices, which we agreed with, said that this is a project that should receive funding, but then no process beyond that to plan for them, to design them and to give them a timeframe, none whatsoever, which I guess is part of the problem we see with the LTIP and the LGIP and the debacle that we saw recently about that in terms of the delivery of infrastructure. There is no political leadership anymore, not in the sense of party political leadership, but strong elected political leadership to make sure that these programmes are well-funded, that these items are costed and that there is a pipeline of infrastructure that the community wants. This isn't something that someone's just, the council's just dreamed up. This is a petition coming from the community, of which council says yes, this is a project that should be built, should be delivered, but then they hit a political brick wall with the LMP, who clearly want to play politics with cycling infrastructure going forward. And I know, you know, in speaking to people who are not just cyclists in both a commuting sense and a more recreational and passive sense, and also people who are cycling activists as well, the whole gamut of people who cycle are saying that they are increasingly frustrated with the approach that this LMP administration takes in the delivery of cycling infrastructure. We heard just recently councillor Murphy get up and say that this administration has the single biggest investment in cycling infrastructure. What he means is the Kangaroo Point Bridge, a bridge in which was designed to have a fancy restaurant, two-storey restaurant on it, a project which used some of that money, that cycling infrastructure money, to buy land to build a cafe and with no plans for on-connections beyond that. People who cycle, both for commuting and for recreation, are starting to get a better picture of this LMP's commitment or lack thereof to active transport. So yes, we did support the outcome, which is, you know, written down there, that this project is supported at all levels of council, both the bureaucracy and the political level. But we just have no confidence whatsoever in the LMP administration being able to deliver it and having a genuine commitment to active transport. Which brings us to the presentation on Active School Travel. I will agree with councillor Murphy that Active School Travel is a good legacy of Campbell Newman as mayor, might be maybe the only one, I don't know. Am I being generous there? He had one, at least. Certainly a better active transport legacy than CityCycle. Imagine the $20 million that was wasted on the CityCycle scheme being invested in active school travel infrastructure and footpaths and bikeways would have been amazing, would have made our city so much more accessible for everybody. So I certainly agree with that. And on the Kindy Travel, I think that's a fantastic initiative of the Queensland Government. Councillor Murphy wouldn't quite say thank you to the Queensland Government for that funding in his opening remarks. That's 100% funded by the Queensland Government, that pilot programme for the Kindy Active Travel Programme. So it's a good one, we support that as well and say thank you to the Queensland Government for that funding. And Active School Travel broadly, I think, has unanimous support here in the council chamber, always has. It's a great programme. We love engaging with our schools and communities and getting people travelling more actively. But also importantly, part of that programme is getting cars and getting those points of danger for young people from prep through to grade six away from the school gate. Want as little interaction with cars and people as possible around a school. So we certainly do support the programme and want to see it thrive into the future as well. We know that Brisbane is now the most congested city in Australia and that's happened on this LMP administration's watch. So investing in programmes like this and making them more successful should be a priority for council. And given how long this programme has been part of council, I assumed, I was actually pretty shocked to find this out at the committee meeting, I assumed that the Active School Travel team, in working with parents and teachers at local schools, had a sort of direct link through the budget process to identify infrastructure that needed to be delivered to enable the better rollout of Active School Travel in our existing schools and in our schools that we're identifying as would be good in the programme. But what we found out at the committee meeting is that the people who decide within council to fund safer paths to schools, for instance, which you would think should be working hand in glove with the Active School Travel Programme, isn't necessarily doing that. We understand that there is some link in there, at some level, information is shared, but there's no direct line through the council budget process to do that. And that's a really slack approach from councillor Murphy and the Lord Mayor as the political leaders in council who should be driving that and giving the council officers the tools they need to get better outcomes. I know that the Active School Travel team in council, they're amazing, the officers I've worked with and those that work in TNO and TPO in identifying these upgrades that need to happen, they need more support. They don't need political leaders like these LMP councils to be so slack in their approach to investing in student safety and investing in active transport out in the suburbs of Brisbane. So you'd be making sure, if you're actually genuinely dedicated to making a more walkable Brisbane and a safer school environment, to making sure that they actually did work together and that you provided a real increase in funding for those programmes, both Active School Travel and Safer Paths to Schools. So we're seeing this year just 16 footpaths being built in Brisbane under the capital programme, and we know each and every one of them is for the Safer Paths to School Programme. We support that, but it should be a whole lot more. And you know, it's quite interesting that when we've been calling for more footpaths, more footpath funding and more footpaths to be built in the suburbs, the LMP's go-to criticism of that and their go-to stop sign is that people don't want footpaths, that's what they say. The LMP say people don't want footpaths, they strangely claim that you've got to, you know, come in and cut down trees to build footpaths and they say that when you survey streets, you don't get them supported. Well, I've just surveyed four in the last three weeks and they've all been supported. The Lord Mayor funds these footpaths in the council budget, we go and consult on them and they're all supported. So I think the LMP's approach is definitely more political than it is in terms of actually delivering infrastructure. But we want to see more footpaths built, not just to make our schools safer and make travel to our schools safer and more attractive in an active sense, but also to make our city more walkable, more equitable and more accessible to everybody that wants to get around our city. And that's certainly something Labour would deliver.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Further speakers? councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I speak on, going to touch on item A with a couple of comments that councillor Cassidy said, but of course, item B. I'll start with some of the comments that councillor Cassidy said about footpaths and they want more footpaths and everything else. Well, I've actually put in more footpaths this financial year than the whole Labour team put together. So if he's got some money there to put in to use for footpaths, stop whining about it, do it. So I'll repeat that. Marchant Ward has put in more footpaths this financial year than all of them on the other side have done collectively, collectively.
Councillors?
So on to item B. I didn't hear very much actually about the Kedron Brook Bike Way. I heard a lot about the Northern Bike Way, I heard a lot about the Kangaroo Point Cliffs. So let me just tell you about our beautiful Kedron Brook Bike Way. There is a huge section that has got jewel for cycling and also for walking separated paths. Can I also remind everyone in this chamber, there was millions, tens and tens of millions of dollars spent from the 22 flood that absolutely destroyed our beautiful Kedron Brook. So there has been a lot of money spent there. We would like to see that extended further, the dual walkway and cycleway across there. But let us not forget that during that flood, it actually ripped up the bike way, the concrete and threw it somewhere else. That was a massive amount of work that this administration, thank you councillor Murphy, thank you councillor Wines and Lord Mayor for investing in putting that bike way back in, because it is the most popular bike way, I would like to say, in the city. We also got to remember, there is a dual bike way bridge, a brand new one happening at Wolf to Hampton Street. So there is a lot of investment happening in that bike way. Yes, there is plans to do more, but we had to spend tens and tens and tens and millions of dollars to actually fix that bike way up and invest in the new Wolf to Hampton Bridge so we won't have those problems what happened down there at Wolf to Hampton Street again. And it's going to be safer for our cyclists. That used to be my favourite cycling route. In fact, my kids learnt to ride on that route and I do appreciate the difficulties that they've got there. Also councillor Murphy, councillor Murphy said that there is some sections of this bike way that have got limited space and that's absolutely correct. There is sections of the bike way that has got limited area, because if you go, because Kedron Brook Bike Way goes through councillor Wines's area, my area, councillor Dixon's area, councillor Adam Allen's area and councillor Tracy Davis's area. But just behind where I'm going to describe as behind Stafford City there, it's probably the best way to describe it, it has got limited space where we could do two of those three-metre bike way sections in that particular area. So whilst we appreciate that we would like to continue, So whilst we appreciate that we would like to continue with the dual bike ways, pedestrian and bike ways, there is some limitations. In closing, I'm just going to again remind everybody, and for those who are listening, there was millions and millions and millions of dollars just recently spent on the Kedron Brook Bike Way, and the residents are happy about the work, and I want to congratulate the officers who worked on that project because we did build back better. It's looking amazing down there, and it is the most popular bike way across our city. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hammond. Any further speakers? See no further speakers. Councillor Murphy write a reply?
Yes, just briefly, thank you Chair. I want to just thank councillor Hammond and councillor Cassidy for their contributions on the item. I actually thought that we were going to have a quite a rare committee report there in that we were actually agreeing councillor Cassidy and I on more than we were disagreeing on. So I just, let's take stock of it. So he did pip me for thanking the Department of Transport and Main Roads and not the Queensland Government. I want to be really clear councillor Cassidy, more than happy to thank the Queensland Government for their contribution to Kindy Active Travel, even happy to thank Minister Mark Bailey if indeed he did know about it and had seen it and had given us the funding. People on this side of the chamber don't play petty politics with thanking other levels of government where they do the right thing, where they contribute to our projects. So I don't know that they had anything to do with that, but if the, the Labour state government was a part of that decision, then more, more than willing to give them credit where it's due. And as I mentioned, we, we have been more than happy on many occasions to work with the state government, to work with Minister Bailey on matters of infrastructure, particularly in active transport where it benefits both council and the state for the benefit of the city of Brisbane. It just so happens that more often than not, Minister Bailey engages in hyper-partisan attacks and politicises public policy when it doesn't need to be, and he makes things more difficult than they need to be. So, but more than happy to give credit where it's due. Councillor Cassidy also talked about the legacy of Campbell Newman, and that's been a pretty hard word for you to mention in this, in this place. You always generally go pretty deranged when we talk about Campbell Newman, but I know that you did say that you thought active school travel was a great legacy of his, and I think that is one for the trophy room for us on this side. So there we go, Campbell Newman, he, he, he has been acknowledged by you for the first time as having done something good in public life, so I, I think that is fantastic. CityCycle, you know, you had a crack at that. Again, I'm more than happy in a bipartisan way to say CityCycle was bad, I'm glad we got rid of it. We were the ones who got rid of it on this side. So, yes, we did bring it in, and sometimes in, in, in politics, in public policy, you need to be prepared to admit you made a mistake, and we did exactly that earlier this term, where we removed CityCycle and replaced it with e-mobility, which has now had over 10 million trips in our city. It was a good decision, it was a great decision, we would make that decision again. But that's where we start to diverge past councillor Cassidy, because you talked about footpaths and you said that we say on this side that people don't want footpaths. It was a classic misrepresentation of our position that you always do. Of course, it's not, it's not that we say people don't want footpaths all the time, we say sometimes they don't want footpaths, but for the most part, it's your team that don't build footpaths. And it's, it's a real shame that, that councillor Hammond, in, in one ward, has spent more than all of your councillors combined on footpaths across the city. As we know, this misrepresentation that continues around this side of the chamber not supporting footpaths is completely wrong. We of course do build footpaths in our wards, and we certainly spend more money on, on footpaths in our wards than Labour councillors do. Almost finally, you mentioned the political process and the four-year cycle as if that was a bad thing. Look, there, there is no secrets here. This organisation actually does run on effectively a four-year programme, that's sort of how the budget works, it's sort of how the election commitments work. The organisation, from the CEO all the way down through the divisional managers and the branch managers, is not blind to the fact that different political parties at elections make commitments and that they need to change their four-year programme if a different administration comes in and has different priorities. That's how it works in the federal government, it's how it works in the state government. That's not politicisation of Brisbane City Council, that's just the reality of how an organisation that holds elections needs to work. And in that respect, councillor Cassidy, it's 187 days to the next election now, and we have seen very little from the Labour Party, and, and actually we've seen more from the Greens in terms of public policy announced for the next election. So rather than criticising what we've done and, and going back and talking about all those old things, perhaps you should spend a little bit more time developing your policy platforms in this area rather than criticising ours. And on that note, you mentioned, you mentioned before the concept of jumping the shark, and it was Fonzie that jumped the shark in season five of Happy Days, Henry Winkler, and I, I bet, I bet my bottom dollar that the one who will be jumping the shark at the next election won't be on this side of the chamber, I can tell you that.
Thank you councillor Murphy. We will now put the Transport Committee report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no, the ayes have it. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of September 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of September 2023 be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Mr Chair, the committee heard a presentation from the programme manager for Transport Network Operations on how that particular branch within council managed the huge traffic expectations and pressures put on us by the FIFA Women's World Cup. So just to give an idea of what was, what sort of burdens were put on the transport network, we had to somehow move 355,000 spectators through our city, both on public and private transport, to the stadium itself, that being Brisbane Stadium, Meanjan, if you weren't sure where that was, the Brisbane Stadium in the city of Meanjan. And of course, we had to have about 780,000 people attend a number of our live sites at South Bank Plaza, King George Square, River Stage and the Cultural Forecourt. So that required a huge effort by our team, whether it be the BMTMC, Transport Network Operations, to manage our road closures, our movements. That also, FIFA also requires special conditions for their VIPs, that they be given special opportunities to move around the city, and so we had to work with them to ensure that that happened as well. So it was a, a huge effort by them to manage the large numbers of traffic that were affected, both to get people to the stadiums but also the road closures that affect the network. Beyond that, to move the FIFA officials around as they were required, we also had both the Secretary of State and the Secretary of Defence of the United States arrive at the same time, and also had to manage their movements through the city as well. So it was a big logistical exercise, and as I say, this session, we've spent a lot of time on operational matters and how our organisation works to do things rather than project work, operational work, and this is one more example of that. So can I just thank the officers for their excellent work to be able to move those people around, those supporters and viewers and people excited by the World Cup for their efforts to get that all to, to work properly. We also had two petitions, both of which were supported by the local councillor.
Thank you councillor Wines. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on item B, the petition requesting council install a stop sign at the intersection of High and Bradfield Streets in Brighton. I supported the recommendation from this committee, which isn't exactly what the residents asked for, but the outcome is still an improvement at that site. And I think this is a typical one of the experience that people are having right around Brisbane in suburban areas. It's not an area that would require a huge intersection upgrade or anything like that. The solution to the problem of local congestion and traffic safety is often a small improvement. It also goes to the point that these things often, often take a petition to get them raised through the council process rather than there being sufficient funding and discretion at a council officer level to agree to these sorts of things and be able to carry them out. I know speaking to our team in TPO locally, they run off their feet, and, and I think those numbers that we saw in the annual report, the 11,000 contacts that people made with council about traffic concerns in suburbs in Brisbane, this, this is a very typical one of those. And I think when, often when people talk about their concerns with congestion in Brisbane and how Brisbane has changed vastly as a city, and how people move around our city as being impacted in many ways, they're talking as much about time travel delays and being held up in traffic and big, big congestion issues, whether they're on buses, whether they're riding their bike through that, or whether they're stuck in it in a car, but they're also talking about these kinds of local traffic congestion issues in their own streets. Sometimes they're, they're as a result of development in their area and a lack of planning controls around what happens in their street in terms of parking and streets being parked out. Often it's rat-running through a street because the sheer volume of traffic in Brisbane has increased, so those major routes are being held up, and people are seeking different, different access through the suburbs and their local street gets impacted on. So I think when you see the small paltry amount of funding that is allocated to, to suburban road projects and intersection projects compared to what we're seeing in these major inner-city projects, you understand why people are getting more and more upset about the issue of congestion, particularly suburban congestion in Brisbane. And often the solution might be signs and lines, and that's not an expensive thing to do. But when it takes six to eight weeks for something to be investigated, and then six to eight weeks for signs to be produced and lines to be marked on very simple things, that pushes everything down the line. And that's when we have situations where years after these things are first raised, that they're finally being addressed. And that's not the fault of those council officers who are working in that area, they are, they are flat-strapped, they are stressed when they come into our office, you can see it in their faces when they produce those lists that are pages and pages and pages long of local requests, and they just don't have the ability to respond to them quickly. And I really feel for those officers. And so I think more investment needs to be made, not just in the delivery of these suburban projects, whether they be signs and lines, whether they be splitter islands or small intersection upgrades, but also more investment in our staff and supporting our council officers to deliver that work. And we work with them so directly as local councillors, I think we would all see the stress that they are under. And I would find it extraordinary if LMP councillors weren't having this experience as well. I'm sure it's not just the Deegan Ward, maybe we have a lot of requests perhaps out my way, but I'm sure other councillors would be, would be experiencing this as well and know that more support needs to go into our workforce to be able to deliver those outcomes that they want to in the community, and more funding needs to go into suburban projects just like this one here. It shouldn't take a long petition process to see that investment flow in the suburbs of Brisbane. Those big, long lists that we've heard about, there used to be lists of projects awaiting funding that sort of get pushed off into the never, never with no dates on them anymore. Those things should be worked through, they should be invested in, and you would then finally start seeing people say, gee, we get good value for money from council out in the suburbs. But until that happens, that sentiment of paying more and getting less is going to hurt the LMP, and they'll find out in March next year.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Hutton.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for a period of one hour, which commences only when councillors have vacated the chambers and the doors have been locked.
Seconded. We've had a dinner motion moved by councillor Hutton, seconded by councillor Mackay for a period of one hour. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no, the ayes have it. Just as a reminder, we're up to the infrastructure support and it's councillors to my right speaking. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to rise this evening to add my support to the petition response, just to indicate that Wondell Road is an extremely busy road and putting it roundabout isn't appropriate. However, through our LGT, we've indicated that lights and also upgrading to Wondell Road to four lanes is a part of our infrastructure plan, and I do support that future upgrade when it comes our way. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Atwood. Further speakers? See no one rising. Councillor Wines write a report. No. We'll now put the report. All those in favour of the infrastructure report, say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no, the ayes have it. Councillor Allen, city planning please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the city planning and suburban renewal committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 29th of August 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Atwood that the report of the city planning and suburban renewal committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of September 2023 be adopted. Councillor Allen, you've got the call.
It's all good, Mr Chair.
In that case, we will put the report, sorry, I should say, any further speakers? No. We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no, the ayes have it. Councillor Mackay. Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee please.
Thanks Chair. I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, 5 September 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Mackay and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of September 2023 be adopted. Councillor Mackay. No. We'll now put the report. Oh, sorry, any further speakers? I keep forgetting to do that. Any further speakers? No. We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no, the ayes have it. Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I just wanted to briefly do a shout-out to, oh yeah, sorry, I was getting very excited. Mr Chair, I move to the report of the city standards committee meeting held on Tuesday, 5th of September 2023 be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Marks.
We're in the green.
And seconded by councillor, councillor Adamin, that the report of the city standards committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of September 2023 be adopted. Now councillor Marks, you can give a sheet.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Chair. As I said, I got a bit excited because I did promise the, the volunteers and everyone running the give a sheet programme out there at Carroll Wharf there last weekend that I would wear their shirt. I did say to them, I actually never wear green, it's not my colour, but they did, I did promise them that I would.
Councillors.
End chambers today for them. So, look, it's an enormously successful programme. I just want to say that there is another event on the 21st of October, nine till three, Car Park Two, Brisbane Entertainment Centre bundle. So if you've got nothing else to do on that day, some people turned up with some amazing stuff and it was really good, and it's all been recycled, and I'll, I'll leave it at that, but absolutely go onto the website and have a look. And I have a committee representation which we did on the ECHA, which is all the council officers' work did pre-ECHA. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you councillor Marks. Are there any further speakers? See no one standing. Councillor Marks, we'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no, the ayes have it. Councillor Howard, community arts and night-time economy please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the community arts and night-time economy committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of September 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the community arts and night-time economy committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of September 2023 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I move to the substantive committee report, I'd like to address the questions raised by councillor Whitme in the chamber last week. To councillor Whitme's first question about pesticides used at Manipi, I can confirm that an environmental management plan is in place for the site, which ensures we remain compliant with state government regulations. I can also confirm that there are exclusion zones on the site to protect further flora and fauna. I do thank councillor Whitme for raising her question about the land remediation costs. I have checked and can confirm that an error was made in committee on the 29th of August when councillor Whitme was provided an answer to her question about the costs of land remediation to council. I would like to correct the record. As per council's website, land remediation work undertaken as part of the Nippi Golf Course Project was undertaken by BMD and fully funded by council at a cost of $5 million to council. Mr Chair, moving to the report, we had a committee presentation on what's on for the school holidays, and I know that everybody was listening very carefully earlier in the, in the day when, when I was able to tell everyone what was on for the school holidays, so I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard. Are there any further speakers? See no one rising. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no, the ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the finance and city governance committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of September 2023 be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the finance. report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fifth of September, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Cunningham. Any further speakers? We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order councillor Hammond.
I move that the motion regarding the review of the Maruka Roundabout be taken off the table.
We have a motion to, just bear with me, we'll get the paperwork. Councillor Hammond. We have a motion before us to remove a motion off the table. I'll read the motion. Given the extensive community concern regarding the removal of the roundabout at the intersection of Taragindy Road, Ferndale Road, Homestead Road and Beverley Hill Street at BCC, that BCC commits to having the new design immediately reviewed, taken into account and community feedback. So all those in favour of taking that motion off the table say aye. Those against say no. Councillors, the motion is off the table. Just before we carry on, I'd remind that the councillors who have spoken are councillor Griffiths and the deputy mayor. Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. It's a shame that the opposition have decided to give themselves an early mark tonight. Councillors might remember that this was a politically motivated motion that councillor Griffiths brought to the chamber after he got caught walking on back on one of his highest priority projects. It was a project he supported for funding for a number of years, and he supported it when construction was underway, telling the officers construction should continue despite some community unrest. But while he was telling officers that he had no problem with the construction continuing, he was protesting the project with local residents and the state MP, who had made placards with Labour Party call flutes. This is one example in a long list of examples where councillor Griffiths has done an Olympic-sized backflip and decided to choose politics over policy. But this is the standard we have come to accept from councillor Griffiths. The reality is that this project is now complete. The independent review has been completed. It found that the designs met all the safety standards, that it didn't have a negative impact on traffic efficiency, but it did identify some improvements to the design. I am pleased to advise that these improvements were delivered in the final design. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hammond. Are there any further speakers to the motion? I see no one here, and the mover is not here for a write a reply. We will now put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no.
No!
Sorry, hang on, hang on. Councillors, enough, please, I'm a bit confused. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. Councillors, the noes have it. Thank you. That's okay, apology accepted. We'll go back to petitions. Councillors, are there any petitions? Deputy mayor.
I have a petition around the removal of leperwood trees in Tamarang Street, Taragindy.
Thank you. Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I've got a petition regarding a BEA in Rochdale.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hutton, can I have a motion to accept the petition?
You can Chair, but it might be difficult because the opposition are not here.
I'm sure we can find someone else.
But, Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee's concern for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Landers that all the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee's concern for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of the Office of the Independent Assessor or Ethics Committee order? I see no councillors standing. Councillors, are there any matters of general business? Councillor Atwood.
My, hasn't reset, doesn't matter. I've got a lot of time left.
That's okay, we'll get to it. You just start presenting.
I rise this evening as last Friday night, I was really, really privileged to attend on behalf of the Lord Mayor, the SES Regional Awards Evening, and it was a great night. I learnt so much about the SES and the incredible work that they do for our city and our state. On the night, we recognised the years of service, and they spanned from five years right up to thirty-five years, so that in and of itself, to have so many recipients, there was over a hundred and eighty who received those awards that evening. They also acknowledged the amazing service from certain members during the floods, but also the work that they did out in Weambilla, where all the police officers were shot. Weambilla? Can't say the name of the town. Apologise. So I did learn a lot about how much they do for the Queensland Police Service, and I wasn't aware of that. And so as a result of the incredible work they do for the Queensland Police Service as well, SES is having a change from the QFES to QPS as well, and I was really excited to hear on the night as well that funding for SES is going from twenty million to sixty million in our state, which is massive, because I know we spend more than twenty million a year in Brisbane City Council and the incredible work they do for us in our city. So yeah, just wrapping up, at the end of the evening, they gave Brisbane City Council an award in recognition of longstanding commitment and support to the state emergency service. They wanted to ensure that the Lord Mayor received this award. They think that the Lord Mayor does an incredible job in supporting, and they know, and they felt so loved on the evening. So yes, thank you SES for all that you do.
Thank you councillor Atwood. Further speakers? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks Chair. I just want to put on the record that the only team that has the ticker and motivation to run this city is the LNP. Team Shrinar are the only people in the chamber tonight. Zero Labour, zero Green.
Sorry councillor Mackay, was that a motion? Right, thank you. Thank you, just needed to clarify. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? I see no one rising to their feet. Councillors, have a very nice recess. I declare the meeting closed.